Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, December 7. On tonight's meeting, the participants will be myself, Cindy Napoli is the chair. We will have Vice Chair Chuck DeCoste, Member Matthew Nordhaus, Member Joseph Knox, and Member Paul Glavie will be participating by telephone. We also have in attendance Anthony Insaldi, our Town Administrator, and Joseph Layton, our Assistant Town Administrator. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States.
Of America.
And to the Republic of the Republic.
Where she stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. The liberty and justice of all. Thank you. So tonight's meeting will begin with a reading of the mail. It will be followed by, we have a continued public hearing at 6:35 PM regarding the fiscal year 2021 property tax classification hearing for Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, on allocating local property tax levy among five property classes, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. That will be followed by a Department Board updates and requests. We have a request from Fire Chief Scott Wodzinski for approval of a purchase order for an ambulance, and we have an acceptance of gift from Digital Federal Credit Union. We also have our Department of Public Works Director Chris Darder. We have an approval of a traffic signal improvement contract. That's for the traffic signal in front of the high school. And then Chief Matthew Pernard, we have an acceptance of a gift from the Digital Federal Credit Union. We have, in addition to that, EHS Director Ashley Shaheen will be with us for acceptance of gifts from the Morrison and Unis, B Morrison Charitable Foundation, as well as Christine Grimes. And then we will be joined by Town Planner Maren Toohill regarding the Weber Village Local Action Units Application for Department of Housing and Community Development, and then a vote to sign a housing contract grant for Hager Homestead. That will be followed at 6:55 by public input and members' updates. At 7:00 PM, we will have Select Board discussions regarding resident discussion of the Sudbury Valley Trustee's herbicide spraying. That will be followed by a discussion of transition of Assistant Town Administrator and Director of Public Works to contract employees. We're going to also discuss scheduling a Select Board retreat, Select Board Liaison updates, discussion on funding, review of Select Board goals, CARES Act funding update, an Affordable Housing Trust update, scheduling of department and community budget meetings, and confirmation of waivers of license renewal fees. At 8:00 PM, we will have an annual license renewals for 2020 alcoholic beverages, Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Class 1 and Class 2 commediculars, automatic, amusement devices, entertainment, lodging house, and valuable secondhand items licenses. That will be followed at 8:15 by the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator updates. The first will be the building department staffing request from our local inspector, a vote to acquire 119 Tehadawon Road, and then general updates. At 8:30 PM, we have a consent agenda, and that will be followed by approval of our meeting minutes, and then our meeting for the evening will adjourn. So we'll begin the meeting this evening with a reading of the mail, Mr. Insaldi.
Thanks, Cindy. There's two things that we received. First of all, the first notice was from Comcast that affected December 20, 2020. Prices for certain programming, including the broadcast TV fee and the regional sports network, is going up ever so slightly. And the second letter that we received that's in your packet is regarding, from Green International, which is the engineer from Mast dot, and they are the responsible party for doing the intersection improvements on Route 2A, Willow and Bruce. And I know that that was a discussion that I was involved with, I was the assistant at the time. So I know it's an issue that we spent a great deal of time on. So Chris is here too, and I just want to explain really what's going on here. So Mast dot changed the complete streets regulations. And what they did is they created a buffer lane, a buffer barrier between the bikes and the cars. So originally, we did this, there was just going to be a bike lane on the street. So now it's a shared path. So the sidewalk will be a shared path that will include bicycles and foot pedestrian. So Chris is on, and Chris can jump in here too, but all the regular, the layout is not changing, it's still going to be signalized. Chris had reached out to Green. Joe, is Chris on?
Yes, he's elevated as a panelist.
Chris, do you want to just add anything else with that?
Yeah, so I reached out to Green International just to kind of confirm the letter and just get a little clarification. Basically, what we have is, everything is exactly the same. The only reason, as Anthony said, they've removed the bike lanes and added that extra space to the sidewalk, and now it's considered a shared use path. The reason they did that is Mast dot bought in Boston, this is kind of now their new standard, this is what they'd rather see. It's safer. This was actually also a result of the road safety audit that was conducted at the intersection. So basically, it just makes the whole intersection a lot safer. As Anthony said, all the signalized intersections, all the signals are going to be the exact same, Bruce Street, Willow, Air Road, and the gas station are all going to have still signalized entrances and exits. There's no tangible difference to the project, other than adding this shared use path on each side of the road.
And this is the first, the first time that we received this. I know in the letter that they referenced that the Town Administrator's office had it, we did not have it. So Chris was able to get what you see in front of you right now from Green.
Yeah, and this, this still, basically what happens is this resets the whole clock with this project. So they still have to go out and do a design public hearing, which will be similar to what we had at Town Hall a few years back. The state will come in with Green, they'll explain the whole project, they'll open it up to any resident of Butters, anybody who's interested in the project to get their opinions and feedback on it, and then that'll, that will lead them to be able to conduct this 75% design. So there's ample time for the town to still be involved if they choose to be.
Okay. Great, thank you very much, Chris. Are there any comments from board members at this time?
Just as long as we have input later on, because I know there's a couple of, two spots where I hope they put down no turn on red, because people pulling out of the gas station when someone's pulling out of Bruce Street have almost had some non collisions out.
Okay. Great, thank you, Mr. Knox. Okay, so next on the agenda, we do have a continued public hearing on the property tax classification. Could you lead us into this, Mr. Insaldi?
Sure, if it may, thank you. So at the last meeting, last Tuesday, you voted on the tax rate. And at that time, we had to leave the hearing open because the DOI didn't certify, didn't complete the final certification of our values. Well, lo and behold, we got the letter the very next day. So at this point, all we would need to do is just open up the hearing and just basically close it, because we've met all the requirements of DOI at this time.
Okay.
So the motion's right there on the screen on the wall.
And I don't believe that Mr. Glavie is available to read the motions this evening. So I don't know if there's another member of the board would like to step in in that regard.
Move the Select Board open the continued fiscal year 2021 property tax classification public hearing for Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, on allocating local property tax levy among five property classes, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Second.
All right, so again, here's the letter, just so the board, which you did receive a copy, so the residents can see that we did get the letter from the Department of Revenue. So at this point, we would just need the motion to close the hearing.
Move the Select Board vote to close the public hearing. Second.
Okay, motion's been made in seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
And is Mr. DeCoste on the call? I don't see him coming up.
No, he is not. I'm also just elevating Paul to join, have him join as a panelist.
Okay. And so I vote in favor as well as closing the public hearing, so that is closed at this time. And next, we have a Department Board updates and requests. And do we have Chief Wodzinski on the call?
Yes, we do. He's just coming into the meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Good.
Good. So this evening, we're looking for permission to purchase our Type 1 ambulance through, that was approved at special town meeting, and for the amount of $304,437 through New England Fire Apparatus, through the Sourcewell Purchasing Compact.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board on this?
No.
Seems pretty straightforward.
The purchase order cracked me up. It's like one, one ambulance. $300,000.
All right, great. If there's no other questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Let the Select Board vote to approve.
While I'm here, I am actually in a parking lot, so I'd appreciate if other folks would make motions, and I'm going to probably mute, not mute myself, listen in until I have to jump in and get home as soon as I can.
Not a problem at all, Mr. Glavie, thank you.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the Fire Department's ambulance purchase order of $304,437 from New England Fire Equipment and Apparatus Corporation, for the purchase of a new ambulance is authorized by Article 15 of the October 8, 2020 Special Town Meeting. Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavie?
That's an aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, so the motion is approved as written. Go forward and purchase the ambulance.
And we're also, in front of you this evening, we received a generous gift from Digital Federal Credit Union for $5,000. We've received this now, I believe, three years in a row. The funds for this will go towards the SAFE and Senior SAFE programs. It'll, it gives us the opportunity to help offset with the purchase of smoke detectors, lock boxes for seniors, things of that nature, kind of helps out with different events, well, events that we were holding pre-COVID, you know, and hopefully we'll be able to do that again in the near future.
That's wonderful that they continue to give even during this uncertain time. It's wonderful that they continue to be so generous, certainly very appreciated, I know by you, Chief, but as the town as well. So any.
Good that I have an account with them. So do I.
So we have a motion?
Move the Select Board vote to accept the donate, a $5,000 donation from the Digital Federal Credit Union to be used to assist the SAFE and Senior Safe Programs. Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glavie?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Chief.
And next, we have, do we still have Mr. Darder on the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi.
Hello. So this is for the approval of the high school traffic signal. Finally, we are at the step where we bid it. We received four bids back. The low bidder was Dagel Electric Construction Corp. It did come in under what our estimate is, so that's, that's a good thing. We've had Green International do all the reference checks for us. I believe we actually use Dagel Electric in town now anyways, so they're a company we are familiar with. We did have a couple issues with their bid, but we had Town Council review that, and just to be safe, we did send it to the Attorney General's Office. They sent us a opinion back, so we feel comfortable with using this contractor, and I hope the board could vote to approve the contract.
That's excellent. It's been a long time coming, seeing this move forward, Chris. So thank you for your hard work and diligence on helping see this through. Are there any questions from the board?
Nope.
So we're ready for a motion.
Move the Select Board vote to award Dagel Electric Construction Corporation of Wilmington, Mass, the Littleton High School Signal Reconstruction Contract, an amount of $183,183, and to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract. Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glavie?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, the motion is approved as written. Thanks again, thanks a lot, Chris.
Thank you.
And we have another gift acceptance this evening, Mr. Insaldi?
We do. Chief Pernard couldn't, couldn't make it this evening, he had a personal commitment that he had to attend to, but this is very similar, exactly the same, from the Digital Federal Credit Union making a donation to the Police Department in the amount of $5,000, and this will be used for our community policing efforts.
Excellent. Think we're ready for a motion?
Move the Select Board vote to accept the $5,000 donation from the Digital Federal Credit Union to be used to augment the future costs of community policing efforts. Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavie?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. And we have another gift acceptance.
The season of giving.
Yeah. It's wonderful.
Joe, is Ashley here tonight?
Yes, she is.
Hello, how's everyone?
Hi, Ashley.
Hi. Sorry, I apologize, my dog in the background.
Oh, it's all right. So we have a couple of gifts to accept this evening, Ashley?
Yes, so we are accepting a gift from the John C. Morrison and Unis C. Morrison Charitable Foundation in the amount of $2,500 towards the TRED account, and also a resident, Christine Grimes. She donated in August and October for a total of $2,074.74 also towards the TRED account. And all money goes towards that account, and every dollar is used for tax relief for low-income elderly property loan owners and qualifying disabled owners.
That's excellent. That's really wonderful. Okay, any, I assume there's no questions from the board, I think we have a motion?
I, Madam Chair, I wouldn't, not a question, but I would like to mention, just for older town residents, I know that includes Mr. Knox and myself, the following is well-known, but for other town residents, perhaps they're not as familiar, that the town's orchard, Nagog Hill Farm, is originally the orchard that John and Unis Morrison owned, and they wanted us to, you know, they made it easier for us to purchase this. They continue to benefit us through these continuous donations. John Morrison, although by reputation was kind of a prickly fellow to deal with, was a longtime servant of the town as a member of both the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals, and, and it's gone well beyond their years, and just wanted to make that point, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
If I could add on to that, talking about Mr. Morrison, I was on the Board of Appeals with him, and he'd stopped the meeting off by saying, what are we giving up today?
Well, it's wonderful, he's been so generous with the town, we certainly appreciate it. And Ashley, as far as people in, who may be in need of assistance, is there, they just contact your department through the town website, or is there a special?
Sure, there, there is a spot on the town website where residents can learn more about applying to receive tax relief. The application process is typically during the summer, so July and August, the application deadline is end of September. So we have participants already enrolled for this year who would receive tax relief off their spring property tax bill.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
And so we're ready for a motion, Mr. Knox?
Move the Board vote to accept the $2,500 donation from the John C. Morrison and Unis B. Morrison Charitable Foundation to the TRED gift account, and to accept the $1,537.37 donation for Christine Grimes for the tax relief for elders and disableds. Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavie?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Thank you very much, Ashley.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley.
Mr. Insaldi, I was just thinking, as we're going through all these, and I know that there's been a few in previous meetings, maybe a mechanism to reach out and thank these organizations and individuals for their donations. I don't know if the individual departments take care of that, but maybe there's a universal mechanism we could use to just make sure.
Yeah, and from my experience in the past that they have, and I've always followed up when I was in Joe's world, so I'm going to pass that right on to Joe to follow up.
Perfect.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure that, we'll make sure that that's done.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have Town Planner Maren Toohill with us this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have two items. The first is asking the Select Board to authorize a signature of the local action units for two affordable housing units at the Weber Village Development. The developer has hired a lottery agent, Maureen O'Hagan of MCO Housing Services, who prepared the application to DHCD. The town, through our Affordable Housing Trust, prepared the local preference memo that goes with it. Those are all ready for your signature, and after your signature, I'll forward that to DHCD, so the two affordable units at Weber Village can be added to our subsidized housing inventory.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, so we're ready for a motion?
Move the Board vote to sign the town's application to Department of Housing and Community Development for two Weber Village local action units. Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Yai.
Mr. Glavie?
Actually, I'm an abutter to that project, so in abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain.
Okay. And Cindy Napoli is aye, so we have three votes in favor and one abstaining from the vote on that motion, but it does pass.
Thank you very much. The second item is, I'm preparing with the Hager Homestead developers, a grant application for a housing choice grant for the Hager Homestead. You recall, about a month ago, they made a presentation about community connections for this development. The grant proposal is for $250,000 to cover water connections, sewer connections, and trail connections to the Hager Homestead development. Hager includes 10 housing units, 10 affordable housing units, and the range is 60% to 150% AMI, and that's 10 out of the 24 senior units that are approved.
Okay. And Maren, if I may, do you know if that $250,000 was incorporated into their, their cost workout for this project, or is that just was kind of set to the side since it's not a definite?
Their hope is to keep the sales price, the market rate price for the, the market rate unit that's lower because of this grant.
Okay, so they already factored that in?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? So we're ready for a motion?
Move the Board vote to sign the Hager Homestead Housing Choice Grant. Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glavie?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Thank you very much, Maren, for your work on this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and so now we are on to public input and members' updates. Do we have any public input?
Currently, we do not have any hands raised of attendees for public input.
Okay, great. Member updates, I'll start with Mr. Nordhaus.
I do not have a member update tonight.
Mr. Knox?
Just quickly, you might mention this anyway, the Toys for Tots, I think, is the Sadie from 1 to 3 at the, at the police station, is that the correct time?
Yep. Great. Mr. Glavie?
Yes, actually, two items, Madam Chair, I, this may come up, I don't know if Anthony intends to cover it, or Joe in their reports later on, but we have been making progress toward bringing a RFP proposal to, back to the board, to continue the contract, or actually to re, reoffer the contract for the Nagog Hill Orchard Management, and, you know, if there's any interest in getting into the details at the moment now, I'm happy to entertain questions, as I'm sure Joe or Anthony are. Counselors advise us that, you know, rather than just extending contracts at this point, we really need to reoffer it as an RFP to, to be clean with state law and that sort of thing, so we're, we're working to do that. I think our plan is to have it before the next meeting of the board. The second item, with a note of sadness, a terrific resident of the town of Littleton, I don't think it's, has passed away, I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that she's really the true historian of the town of Littleton in our lifetime, but Carolyn Webster, you know, was buried today, and she was a great, great citizen of the town. A lot of us knew her through her activity at the Baptist Church, through her longtime association with the Historic Commission. Her histories of the town were both reflected in the 250th Anniversary of the Town Report and the 300th Anniversary of the Town Report, and she was just a great lady and will be dearly and sorely missed.
Right, yeah. Well said, Mr. Glavie, thank you for that. So I have a few updates for the board, the Littleton Affordable Housing Trust. I just wanted to remind the public that we do have an emergency rental assistance program available for anyone who is struggling making, sustaining their rental household costs at this time. We have a regular program, but we also established an emergency program due to the pandemic. There's funding available through that program, so if anyone listening or watching is in need of assistance or knows somebody who is in need of assistance, please feel free to reach out to the Department of Elder and Human Services or the Town Administrator's office, and they'll provide you with the proper link to apply for that program. The other thing I wanted to just update the board on is the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Plan Implementation Committee. I am also the chair of that committee. We have, uh, we're working on putting together a update of achievements, um, and works in progress up to this point, um, for the public and, um, as far as, and also establish goals going forward. So hopefully we'll have something to share with the board in January, um, from that committee. Um, and just a few reminders is Selectman Knox had indicated there is a, a drive-through Toys for Tots event this Saturday at the Littleton Police Station, um, from 1:00 to 3:00 with Representative, um, James Arciero in support of the, um, Lowell Santa Fund. So I hope residents can come by and support that initiative. Also, uh, the, um, Park and Recreation has their Holiday Helpers, um, wishlist online this year. This is a great, um, program that it, um, benefits many families in need in our area and it's always been a huge success and it's great to see that they have, um, continued that this year with a, an online format, um, as well. So if anyone is interested in making a monetary donation or choosing from the wishlist, they can go to the town website at littletonma.org. And the Park and Recreation homepage has a special link, um, where you can access the, um, the wishlist. I also, um, wanted to mention that the Littleton Electric Light Water Department, uh, will be having a, um, public sewer sighting forum, um, on Tuesday, December 15th at 7:00 PM. It will be, um, ca, on, published on Comcast Channel 8 and Verizon Channel 38. Those are , um, public access channels. And then finally, I just wanted to, um, make a mention of the wonderful jobs, um, done this weekend to see that some of Littleton's traditions continued virtually. I had a few residents reach out to me and just say that they were really, um, impressed and thankful that, um, so much hard work went into seeing, uh, the, um, the holiday bazaar and the Christmas tree lighting still proceed this, this year. And I wanted to just mention specifically, um, the hard work of LCTV. We are so fortunate to have such a great group of people, um, and to have that organization in the town of Littleton. Mark Corry, Judy Reed, and Kirby Dolak. Um, and I also wanted to just mention, um, Jim Barasano, Dave Banks, Dorothy Malone, Dave Lazzott of the Littleton Electric Light and Water Department, Judy Grandy, and Steve Guy, um, Lines, who also participated in, in this weekend's programs and just thank them for their hard work, um, and just bringing a little holiday cheer to our, our town this weekend is very much appreciated. And that is all I have for, that's all we have for member updates. And so now we're on to a select, select board discussion. We have a number of items here. Want to lead us into this, Mr. and Sally or Mr. Layden?
Uh, Joe, if you wanna, I know you've done a great deal of work on this and I do have the slides, um, ready, Joe.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, uh, Anthony. Um, so I mean, just, uh, one of the things I think a lot of, uh, residents as well as the board members are aware, there's been a lot of community discussion regarding, uh, the use of, um, uh, herbicides, uh, by Sudbury Valley Trustees, uh, for the conservation land located at 119 Wadcome Ave. Um, we've had, uh, requests from residents, uh, to have, uh, meeting and provide comments to the select board. And also at our, uh, in advance of our previous regularly scheduled meeting, we had a request from SVT to continue to tonight so that could have a larger discussion and have their involvement as well. Um, because there's, um, a lot of, uh, interest, um, and also so that, uh, could, could sort of have some, uh, structure for it, uh, would at least recommend, um, that, uh, we then have Sudbury Valley Trustees first sort of give an overview as far as, uh, their letter that they submitted to the select board, um, highlighting, uh, use of herbicides. Uh, then a residence group has prepared a PowerPoint presentation, um, which then, uh, you know, gives Sudbury Valley Trustees a chance to respond, then give it, uh, the board an opportunity to ask questions before then opening it to, uh, residents and attendees of the meeting to, um, either provide, uh, comment or, uh, ask questions. I would ask that, uh, anyone that does wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature so that we can identify you and, uh, give you an opportunity to, to speak.
Madam Chair, can I, can I just, uh, as I had done earlier, uh, only because I'm involved with the project that Sudbury Valley Trustees is also involved with, I'm, uh, I'm gonna abstain from this as well. Uh, if, it's really not a, a, a major matter, but, uh, since you have a majority of the board participating, um, it'd also give me an opportunity now that I'm in my driveway to get into the house. So I'm gonna, uh, bow out of this discussion and I'll join after. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm just checking, I've, uh, just bringing one more person from SVT in, um, uh, so that they can provide an overview as far as, uh, their program.
Joe, I'm sorry, was that my, my cue to get started?
Yes, Lisa.
Okay. The, the computer, uh, had me rejoined. So there we go. Well, thank you, everyone. Uh, my name is Lisa Vernegard. I'm the Executive Director at Sudbury Valley Trustees and I'm joined, uh, this evening with Laura Mette, who's our Director of Stewardship, and Karen Paquin, who is the Chairman of the Board, Chairwoman of our Board. Um, I saw that you had a very packed agenda this evening. So, uh, out of, uh, interest of time, I, I don't come, we did not come prepared with a full presentation. I trust you've had the opportunity to read what was in your, your briefing packet. But a, a quick overview, if I may. Um, so Sudbury Valley Trustees' mission is to protect natural areas for, uh, wildlife and people in Littleton and in 35 other communities in Metro West. We take a lot of pride in carrying out science-based management to ensure that our properties provide high-quality wildlife habitat for a diversity of plants and animals and as well as safe enjoyment, uh, opportunities for people. One of the biggest things that we, we wrestle with and one of the biggest threats, uh, to ecological health, uh, ace of species include, including Asian bittersweet, which outcompetes and overtakes, overtakes native plants. Uh, these invasive species really are a cancer on our land and are harming the ecological health of our landscapes. Without action, the cancer will continue to degrade habitat, severely reducing all manner of native pollinators and insects, including bees, which turn, in turn reduce food for mammals and especially... These invasions result in large-scale consequences for the health of our environment. And of course, we believe that a healthy environment is fundamental to human health. Now, we understand and share the concern about the legacy of chemical, of chemical use in our society. Indeed, we have advocated for bans on certain chemicals such as neonicotinoids and we prohibit aerial spraying for mosquitoes at our properties. We also understand the desire to address this problem using only mechanical means, getting and digging the stuff out. It's a reasonable idea, but we have learned that this simply isn't practical or effective at this scale in a natural environment. Thus, guided by science, our desire to succeed, and out of an abundance of caution, we are taking a very conservative, targeted approach to tackle this invasion, this invasive species at the Smith Conservation Land. This approach will employ both mechanical means as well as the very targeted use of a limited amount of herbicides. I'll further add that we are using an approach that has been adopted as best management practice by conservation organizations across the country. And finally, I'll note that we have reduced the area that will, we are intending to use herbicides from 22 acres to 11, with an asterisk noting that, you know, I and we are concerned that this, that we're not going to be successful, uh, you, in those areas that we're just going to use mechanical, but we're going to try. Ultimately, it is our hope that we can restore the ecological vitality of one of Littleton's natural gems, the Smith Conservation Land. We, we're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, uh, next we have Kajra Walsh. I just, uh, brought her in as a panelist, um, and we already have her presentation pre, uh, preloaded. Uh, so Kajra, if you can just let us know, um, when to advance things, that would be great.
All right. Thank you. So a year ago, Sudbury Valley Trustees notified abutters of the plan to use cut and dab and spray pesticides sites on over 25 acres of Smith Conservation Land. They expressed great surprise that residents voiced strong concern and said they would delay the use of chemicals until they conducted further research. Residents did their own research, bringing in business owners of companies who manage bittersweet and other invasives without chemicals. Knowing that SVT had funding already established for spraying, we were concerned that the research conducted would conclude that SVT simply had to use chemicals. We are, of course, not surprised that the federal government does not cover alternatives to chemicals given the lack of corporate interest on conducting studies on things like goat grazing or manual removal. This fall, SVT returned with the same plan, except they offered a 50-foot buffer to residents and the town advised buffer to private wells. That plan has since been whittled down because the Conservation Commission denied them the use of chemicals anywhere in their jurisdiction and requested that they extend more than that. SVT also revisited their map and updated their acres to account for areas which have no bittersweet. The Conservation Commission's decision is a reflection of how concerning the proposal from SVT is. So I assume all of us here tonight are averse with the sensitive aspects of this property, its location in a zone 2 wellhead protection area, downward sloping to Beaver Brook and flanked by re, residents with families and private wells. But these chemicals do not hold fewer risks simply because SVT believes in the reason for their use. Last week, we learned that PFAs, those forever chemicals in one of our own municipal wells, are in IMDAR and EPA-approved insecticide. Inville, IMDAR classifies that chemical, under the name of Anvil, as a chemical that is extremely well-studied, low-risk, and they say it breaks down quickly. That is a sad statement to consider now. Risks are and will continue to emerge with these chemicals. We also do not know the way these chemicals will interact with this particular property and what the chemical footprint on this site is. In a letter from SVT, they stated that Littleton Conservation Trust has been spraying bittersweet and other invasives for years on this property. This begs the question of, well, how well does spraying actually work? There also was a Christmas tree farm here and those tend to use a high level of chemicals. We are particularly concerned about the use of aerosolized chemicals as a practice which many groups are moving away from. Spraying with even coarse droplets atomizes the herbicide, causing micron-sized particles to drift and possibly damage or kill non-target plants. It creates risks to pollinators and contains soil. In low wind conditions of 10 miles per hour used by SVT, airborne particles travel at 14 and 1/2 feet per second, easily traveling into wetlands territory and into residential property. Adding to the concern, hikers, children, and dog walkers may be exposed to foliage that has been ex sprayed, has been sprayed in the days before, as SVT plans to only post signs on the day of application. Go ahead. Next slide. So the EPA reviews chemicals only every 15 years and Triclopiir has just completed EPA review, but the finalized document will not be released until 2021. This means that IMDAR, DEP, and the Littleton Water Department are all reviewing information that could potentially be obsolete in a matter of months. This, along with the revelation about PFAs, illustrates how our understanding of the safety of chemicals is changing with time. The proposed EPA decision for Triclopiir has some significant changes, as listed on this slide. Information continues to emerge about Triclopiir's fate and mobility in water. Triclopiir is now identified as existing in plant matter after the plant has decomposed. And somehow, I didn't list this, but the EPA did, uh, it's now considered a potential bee toxin based on a 35% reduction in adult bee survival. It's recommended that at least 1,000 feet be a buffer for forestry, campgrounds, parks, and rights of way uses. And that's because of the diversity of plants in those areas that bees may be, um, landing on and habitating as opposed to in turf. We did actually reach out directly to the Chemical Review Manager at EPA in Washington, and he confirmed that the label proposed will be, and I quote, "This chemical has properties and characteristics associated with chemicals detected in groundwater. This chemical may leach into groundwater if used in areas where soils are permeable, particularly where the water table is shallow." Next slide. So metsofuran methyl is a chemical that has been, uh, largely undiscussed by SVT. It's extremely potent and its label use starts at 1/10 of an ounce per acre. It is a salt, so its potential for affecting water has significant implications. The EPA acknowledges that they have insufficient ecotoxicity data for pollinators. Beaver Brook is stocked with rainbow trout and rainbow trout are approximately 100 times more sensitive than bluegill sunfish to metsofuran methyl. Metsofuran methyl also has some very concerning properties as a metabolic disruptor, causing decreased blood glucose levels and increased cholesterol. In both chronic and subchronic toxicity studies, it is identified as an indirect neurotoxin. And there have been no studies on the endocrine system or the immune system. It is also banned in the state of California. Next slide. So some have been eager to note that there's no jurisdiction over the Smith property, but Littleton takes on the financial, health, and environmental risks. This is a growing topic of community concern in the region. All of these towns, except for Sudbury, Concord, and Northampton, already have municipal ordinances banning pesticides on public and/or public and private land. Concord actively discourages spraying. Sudbury does not have an ordinance, but it does not allow chemical use in a zone 2 wellhead protection area like Smith unless all other options have been proven to be ineffective for the site. Northampton restricts chemical use in a zone 2 wellhead area to one application every 24 months. At the state level, legislation is in process to empower towns and cities to protect residents and the environment from harmful pesticides and supersede corporations of which SVT is in these kinds of plans. As a town bearing the risks, it is reasonable for Littleton to ask more from SVT. Next slide. All of these businesses exist and have demonstrated the viability of manual approach to bittersweet and other invasive plant removal. Some of them work on scales far greater than the area of the Smith land. Neighbors sought out multiple practitioners on this list at our expense to encourage SVT towards non-chemical options. And we are asking that SVT commit to no spraying. Oh, go ahead. Next slide. We are asking that SVT commit to no spraying. Since SVT, and that is because of the risks that I went over, um, earlier in the slideshow. Uh, since SVT also knows that the labels and research will be updated in a matter of months, it seems only fair that the state and Littleton be able to review this new information and that SVT not start using these chemicals before then. SVT sees this as a low-risk plan, yet there's no scientific monitoring to take place. Cut and dab chemical use requires a very high concentration of chemicals, much higher than spraying. These chemicals are pulled down into the root system where they are not exposed to the sun for phyto-degradation. The root systems are very close to the shallow water table of the Smith property. Therefore, we request that- Therefore, we request that SVT develop a test site first and actually test its mobility and face fate in this soil at this particular site before proceeding with the entire site. Along with this, we ask that they develop a responsible plan, for if leaching into our groundwater and wells were to, God forbid, become an issue. We ask that the Select Board support us as a community, forward-looking with these requests to SVT. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Lisa, would you like me to go ahead and respond?
Well, Madam Chairwoman, perhaps you can guide us. Kedra has put together, you know, a very comprehensive PowerPoint with a lot of information.
Right.
You know, this is a, so perhaps you can guide us. We can respond to some of the key points, if you wish. What, how would you like us to proceed?
Honestly, I mean, feel free to take your time and respond to whatever points you feel are pertinent and relevant to the discussion.
Thank you for that. So I will then pass that to Laura Matei, our Director of Stewardship.
Thank you very much. So, Kedra, could you, well, whoever's moving the slides, could you go back? Let's see. Sorry. That way I can remember what was said. Okay. All right. All right, you go forward one, thanks. So, I think Kedra makes a good point about looking at the upcoming EPA results. We do have a very recent study that was done in Massachusetts that is quite relevant to the site and the concerns there. I'm just on the wrong sheet here, just give me one second. The study conducted in Eastham, Massachusetts, where it used the Triclophir and the metsyfuran methyl, which is in extremely low amounts. That study concluded that there would not, given at the rate and with the method of application, the herbicides used in the rights-of-way in Eastham will not result in herbicide concentrations in ground and surface water that would cause harm to humans and aquatic wildlife. Even if the soils are different at the site we're talking about, we know that they're also coastal plain sandy soils, so they're somewhat similar. And I think what's important about that study is it's so relevant and it's really looking at the particular application that we're talking about. I know a lot of the work that goes into the EPA documents, they do a lot of toxicity studies that were actually feeding animals these chemicals, which I find very disagreeable, but that's how they look at maximum amounts in toxicity. And so that helps them get a sense of toxicity, but it doesn't really apply to what's actually happening in real life on the ground. And the other important piece of that is if we're looking at how would bees or invertebrates be impacted by some of these herbicides. When we're doing risk assessment, we really have to look at what's the actual pathway to the harm that might be impacted. So if we're doing a very limited amount of herbicide application directly to the plant, it gets absorbed by the plant, it breaks down. Where does it come into contact with any potential critters? And I know that the neighbors have expressed concern about the limited spraying. Again, that's a handheld wand from a backpack sprayer, so it's very directly applied. I've seen it in action several times. I can also say that, for example, there was a very limited impact to the plants around that. And so we're spraying leaves, and those bees, for example, would be on flowering plants, that's where they'd be going to pollinate. So they would not be interfacing there. So when you look at the, actually, what's happening on the ground, the risks are indeed quite low. Let's see, and then... Yeah, and PFAS is a very different type of chemical, so, and again, I'm not a chemical analyst either. And then, so let's see, is this, did you just advance the slide, Joseph? Joe? Yeah. So you think those are the factors that I think are most relevant. If you go ahead one more. And then, yeah, for example, the adverse liver and kidney effects at the bottom of this list. Again, that's when they're feeding this to animals, and that's not at all what's happening in this situation. So if you can continue forward. Metsyfuran methyl, I talked about a study that's very relevant here. And again, looking at actual risk assessment, and if you go ahead one more. So in Concord, oops. I will say that in Concord and Sudbury, we have projects that we have very recently been approved to use herbicide spray there. So there definitely are different nuances there. If you go to the next slide. So on this one here, we did do quite a bit of work following up on these. So the bittersweet vine, you know, in terms of why not mechanical, why can't we do it all mechanical? So the bittersweet vine at the conservation land covers, as we noted, about 22 acres. It's been developing there for over the past 20 years. That means that it has a pretty good expansive root system. And this plant is known to be very difficult to control in all cases. Mechanical work at the scale, we do not believe, is feasible, and it's not guaranteed to work either. SVT and our partners together really taken a good look at this over many years. Complete removal of the root system involves, which is often what's entailed, digging up the soils up to one foot downward. This causes tremendous soil disturbance. That in itself can foster invasive plant growth and can upset soil microbial ecosystems. Controlling a patch of bittersweet in one's yard is vastly different than trying to do that in a natural ecosystem. Though I'm very aware of success on small areas and in yards. It can be done with that very intensive use. We consulted with some of the mechanical-only folks that are on this list. So for example, DeRosa Environmental visited the site and provided an estimate for the four-and-a-half-acre red pine area alone, it would cost $26,000. Now, that approach was a heavy mechanical, trying to get all the root mass out. I'm also aware that at another site that DeRosa did that work, they had to go back in and use herbicides because it was not effective. There was another site in Vermont, a practitioner who was... When we spoke to Got Weeds, they referred us to this practitioner, so I followed up on that lead. They used, again, especially-designed large machinery to uproot bittersweet going down about eight inches. That resulted in good, vigorous, bittersweet respouting that they needed to use an herbicide to take care of. We obtained an estimate on goat grazing. That's $600 per 1/3 acre. However, goat grazing doesn't in and of itself solve the problem, especially not in a natural system where you're trying to cultivate plant diversity and healthy forests. Goats are nondiscriminate, and you'd have to have them keep going in there again to eat anything. So they're going to eat whatever that they see. So in some areas, you can use that as an initial clearing mechanism, and in some cases, perhaps for field management. I spoke for several, you know, we, the neighbors did hire the person at Got Weeds to come and speak, and I had also, at the same time, been reaching out to him, and I followed up with him on several phone conversations to see exactly how he'd done things and how that worked in his experience. And in my conversations with him, his experience with bittersweet is limited because where he works, there isn't as much bittersweet. And I also had reached out to the folks in Great Barrington and talked to them about their project. Again, the total area that they work on in cutting the bittersweet is approximately one acre. So it's hard to compare that and what it takes. And I know that one of the ones that, the best ones I've seen, is a resident in Acton who was using a very methodical extraction method to getting out the roots. And his showed the most promise in terms of what I saw a year later at a site in Acton. It was only two acres. But we would like to try that out at the site. But again, it's a lot of soil disturbance, and we have a very entrenched system here. So we absolutely have looked at these opportunities. And at this point, we've already cut the area that we're going to be using herbicides in half. So it's only 11 acres. I'm not sure that we can be effective in the amount of area right now contemplated to be mechanical. So those are my responses to that particular aspect of things. And then if you could go to the next slide. Yeah, I don't think it makes sense for us, anyway, to look at that kind of testing. My one, my phone call with the folks who do testing in Massachusetts said that they didn't see that it would make sense for us to try to do testing at the site, given what we were doing, and they also felt that it would... They were, they didn't really understand why we would need to do testing, and they said, "Well, you might need to, like, get someone to do a more complicated research project." And I just, you know, we just don't feel like that makes sense for us in what we do in our work. Lisa or Karen, I don't know if you've had anything else to add.
The one thing I'd add is I just want to be clear for everyone here is that what's driving our desire to move forward is, again, is to actually restore the wonder of the Smith Conservation Land. It was suggested that because we were getting funding in part, that would cover part of the costs, that, and that state, that federal funding would not fund mechanical work, that's not going to make the decision for us. We're going to make a decision based on what we believe is right and effective. You know, so we've walked away from funding before if we didn't think the project was right. So I just want to make that clear.
Great, thank you. Mr. Insaldi, I believe that we did receive a comment from the Littleton Water Department?
We did. Joe, do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I can share my screen or I can read it, it's not terribly long.
If you want to read it, whichever is easier, Mr. Leyden.
Okay. Okay, so on the screen is the letter from Corey Godfrey, Superintendent, Littleton Water Department, where basically stating that the Water Department has received many calls and emails regarding the proposed application of Trilofor-based herbicide to control oriental bittersweet and invasive species at the Smith property off of Woodcombe Avenue near the Littleton Town Line. The potential of, for Trilofor to reach groundwater depends primarily on the present percent organic matter and the soil matter where it is supplied. United States Department of Back Control Soil Survey data. The Smith property identified these soils as containing 95% organic matter and having a very low pesticide-leaching potential. In addition, soil movement studies. You can tell I'm not a chemical scientist here. Trilofor have shown that it does not penetrate the soil any deeper than 36 inches, well above groundwater table in this area. Based on the facts, the Water Department does not expect any proposed application at the property to have any effect on drinking water quality.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much, and I was just curious as well, whether, do we have any, I believe we have comments from the Conservation Commission? As well as, I don't know where my screen just went. Do we, did we receive comments from the Conservation Commission as well, Mr. Insaldi?
Joe?
No, we don't have specific comments from the Conservation Commission.
Okay, and what about the Board of Health? Did we ever hear from them?
No, we did not.
Okay. All right, great, so at this time, I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions or comments from board members.
You're muted, Joe.
Okay, the original map that you had up is to show the property, can you put that up?
Sure.
Yeah. Can you explain to me what the numbers mean in these certain districts from 0, 1, 3, 2, and so forth?
Yes, I can do that for you. I'm going to blow it up on my screen so I can read it also. Okay, so I designated different management units. They're based on the community type, and it helps us kind of look at how we're going to do a project. So Unit 1, to the top to the north, is where there's a red pine stand that's dying off, and the bittersweet is definitely grows up more onto those dying red pine, and they start to all come down. The Unit 2, lower down, yep, that's a peninsula that's largely tamarack, which it's actually a European species of larch. Unit 3 is a combination of Norway spruce and old field area. And then, look, going down to Unit 5, you can see that there's a lot of field area there, but then there's also some mixed trees in there as well. And where it says zero, it's just kind of a, what was happening with, when I was maybe making mapping units. So all that means to you right now is that there's, that's a mechanical only. And then, so if you look at the circles, if you go up to the top, back to one, sorry, go back to the, yep, there you go. Those are the residential wells with a 125-foot buffer area around them. So there's four of those, two there, and then one, and then another further down to the south, yep, there you go. Oh, and by the way, I forgot to say, the blue line to the east there is, and the hatching there, the blue hatching, is the 100-foot buffer to the wetland delineated margin. Okay, so then if we go west of Witcombe Avenue, you'll see... you'll see like little ponds, those are the vernal pools. And then those circle blobs are the 200 foot buffer areas to them. And then the green, there's like a light green pattern on 1, 3, 5, and 4. Those are the areas where there would be the use of herbicides. And yeah, correct.
Can you say, can you repeat that, please?
Where the herbicides would be used?
Yes.
Okay, 1, 3, 5, and 4.
Okay.
Not in the 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 circles, the the circles around.
Right, right. And those those will not be sprayed, correct?
We have a plan to cut and dab and and then do the wand backpack spray.
Okay. All right, great. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair. I this is a this is this is a difficult issue. I mean, I I like and respect both sides of this. And in order to prepare for this discussion, I I watched the Conscom meeting about this issue. I I followed up with Julie Rupp, who's on the Conscom. I read letters from the neighbors. I read all the letters from the neighbors and the abutters. I spoke to an abutter on the telephone. And I've read statements from the Littleton Conservation Trust. I I think that Sudbury Valley Trustees has been a very responsible steward of land in our area for many, many years. I don't think that they chose this approach lightly. And watching the Conscom meeting, I was impressed by their detailed plan and their research, and also their willingness to follow the requests of Conscom to increase the buffer zones. And on the other side, I do understand the concerns of those abutters, those living nearby, you know, especially people with wells. There have been too many compounds introduced into the environment and the true long term effects only appear years later. I think we should balance the very serious concern of the use of these chemicals against SVT's history of responsible land stewardship and the real damage that invasive species can do. So my understanding is that the Select Board can't impose any action on SVT, and we can only make a request. Is is that correct?
Mr. Insaldi?
That's correct.
Right. So I guess, you know, I if we can ask them to hold off spreading until the recertification and changes are released, which I believe is only in a few months, and then reconvene, I would feel most comfortable. But I I do not, you know, I I I would prefer not to outright ban or, you know, make a statement to outright ban the herbicides at this time.
Okay.
I would agree with Madam Chair, with with Mr. Nordhaus. I think the Sudbury Trust has years and years of great stewardship that we all recognize. And just to make a recommendation, not to follow what they're doing, we'd probably be wrong at this time. But at the same time, I think we probably should delay making any recommendations till everything's taken care of, all the facts are.
Okay. Mr. Glavy, do you have any comments?
I believe he recused himself.
Oh, that's right, he did. My 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 bad. Okay, so I concur with Mr. Nordhaus and Mr. Knox's formation, you know, certainly. You know, the Sudbury Valley Trustees have been, you know, a great steward for conservation land. You know, no one can dispute that. And, you know, I'm certain that they didn't make this decision lightly. And it seems to be that they've done a lot of consulting and research and, you know, background. At the end of the day, we really want to preserve this this parcel of land. I think no one here at the table would dispute your intentions whatsoever. We just need to find the best course of action to go forward to do this and protect this land in a safe in a manner that's going to, everyone's going to be feel comfortable with. And that would be, you know, the residents of Littleton, the Sudbury Valley Trustees and everybody else involved with this process. We certainly don't want to do anything that's going to, you know, make the residents uncomfortable. And certainly, the Sudbury Valley Trustees, that is not your intention whatsoever. And we acknowledge that. So I think if there is a little bit, if we're waiting for some further studies and some more information to come out, and that will not have a a severe detrimental impact on the end goal here, that that delay in time won't really impact this project that much. That delay in time or I'm looking at at you, Lisa, maybe you can answer that.
Yeah, so we will we will certainly take the request under consideration. We understand the 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 request. And I I I as just a a point of curiosity, you know, we, of course, we want to be treated in the same way all landowners are being treated in the town and through our our region. And, you know, this this our our work, we're proposing, I think, the the Zone 2 wellhead area around the Wit- the Witcombe Ave Water Protection Area is is 11 out of 1,300 acres. So my question back to the board is is will be are will we be treated in the is this request going to be made of, you know, all landowners throughout Littleton?
Right. And that's a really good point and, you know, question to bring up. I mean, honestly, based on the recommendation or the the letter submitted from the Water Department, that there really wasn't any concern on their behalf with respect to this treatment taking, you know, place within the parameters of those wells. I I put a lot of bearing on that. I know that our Water Department certainly does their diligence on a daily basis. I don't think a lot of people, residents of Littleton, realize how closely they do monitor our water supply. And that's not something that they would take lightly if they felt whatsoever that there was any concern of a potential impact on the water supply for the town of Littleton. And I do, you know, I appreciate, you know, where you're coming from, the point that you just made. Certainly. I just think if it would appease the residents of Littleton, if we did wait for that additional information to come in, that would be very much appreciated by the Select Board if the Sudbury Valley Trustees would consider that request.
Yeah, we will certainly consider it. I will consult with our our board in the in the next couple of days and will certainly provide a response with this week.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time and your your presentation and the information.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, so we will wait.
Yeah, excuse me, Madam Chair. I don't know if we have three, four hands raised from attendees. I don't know if we want to take any comment or.
If they if there was anything different that they wanted to add to the conversation, that would be fine. I think we had two very comprehensive detailed presentations made. So if there was, you know, I I think we we reached a pretty amicable solution at this point, so. But if there was anything new that anyone wanted to add, I'd certainly welcome that. Otherwise, I would just, you know, ask that maybe we could just wait until we get the results of that other testing and other reports, and then we revisit this at a future Select Board meeting, when we hear back from the the Sudbury Valley Trustees on their decision.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe what I could propose is that we just lower all the hands. And then if someone did have new information, they can re-raise their their hand, although it looks like some people are starting to lower themselves. Yeah, we have we have three people that continue to have their their hand raised.
Okay. It I welcome their their comments. If they could just keep them brief, I'd appreciate it, just in the spirit of time.
Okay, thank you. First, Mass Wildlife, if you could give us your name and address?
Hi, this is John Scanlon, Habitat Program Supervisor for Mass Wildlife. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, thank you. I will be brief. I appreciate this opportunity to give some comment at the at the Select Board meeting. Just say briefly that Mass Wildlife shares really all of the concerns that I've heard tonight. I think everyone involved really shares a common goal of, you know, of avoiding minimizing use of herbicides. I just want to say in terms of new information that while it is possible to to have effective manual control of invasive plants on a small scale, I am unaware of any, you know, peer reviewed, published scientific journal articles that have demonstrated effective, large scale success in controlling invasive plants on conservation lands. And I would love to see it. We at Mass Wildlife, we do use herbicides to control invasive plants to restore habitats for rare and declining species. And we don't take it lightly. We wouldn't do it if we felt there was a viable alternative. So I just wanted to quickly support Sudbury Valley Trustees. I think they've taken a very thoughtful approach. And at the same time, want to validate and respect the the concerns of of the abutters. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Scanlon.
Okay, Madam Chair, next we have Robert Stevens.
Hi, my name is, let me get the video, it doesn't matter. My name is Robert Stevens. My wife and I have lived on Moore Lane for 40 years, and we lived in Littleton for 48. I just want to clarify with Sudbury Valley Trustees. They were supposed to start applying this chemical on Wednesday, two days from now. Did they just agree to put that off until these new regulations and all this new documentation can be absorbed?
No, that's a, it's a, go ahead.
So, Mr. Stevens, what we we agreed to take the Select Board's request under consideration, and I will consult with our board in the coming days before we start any work. And we.
So you're pausing you're you're pausing the Wednesday start of the application?
We we will not. And as Laura has done, we have been very forthright in sharing our plans and we're trying to be really transparent. So that is correct. We will not start any work without first notifying everyone who's on that email list. And after we've informed the board of the Select Board of our response to their question.
Okay, ju- just for the people who are not on wells in town, virtually everybody around here is on a well. And the water level in the well is about 10 feet below the surface. So we're not talking huge degrees of having the chemicals seep down. The wells are deep, but the water level comes right up to almost the surface.
Okay.
A point of clarification, Lisa, my understanding was that the board was asking us to hold off on any spray applications until the new report came out.
No.
Is that what I heard?
All applications.
Matthew, do you want to reiterate your request to the for the group?
I I would prefer no application until until there's a that link has been sorted. I I personally, I mean, look, I'm not an expert on chemical herbicides. I have heard both sides that the 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 compounds break down quickly in inside the plants. And people who say they don't, you know, and I'm sure that you could probably go on the Internet and find both both arguments. So with all respect to everybody who's chimed in today, like I would, I would, you know, prefer to wait and get all the information. That's my only request, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we're under a two day, a two day deadline? Is that correct? You're supposed to start in two days?
No. We 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 will not proceed with the use of herbicides until we have responded to your request. And then we will share that response with everyone who is on our email list, basically, anyone who's interested in what's happening.
Okay. All right, great, thank you, thanks. Was there anything else, Mr. Stevens?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Leyden?
Yes, Madam Chair, one more person. Kristen, if you can also state your name and address for the record.
Hi, am I up yet? Hi, I'm I'm Kristen Ferrante, 200 Witcombe Ave. A quick thing, a year ago, we had heard the proposal from SVT, and they dismissed the concerns about the spray drift to my home daycare. My daycare abuts the land to be sprayed, and my water table is likely to be quite shallow. I'm responsible for the health and the well being of the children I care for, whom are all children from Littleton. And the community should not be forced to take on the risks of our health, land, and water just so Oriental Bittersweet can be controlled in one small portion of land. I just want to reiterate, I know Laura knows that I have a home daycare. But I'd like to reiterate to the other SVT members, this is a home daycare, and the spray drift, I abut that land. And that causes great concern to the health and well being of the children I care for. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Lisa, can you respond to that as far as this spray drift?
Laura, I'm going to turn to you for.
Yeah, that's fine. We have added an additional 50 foot buffer to that boundary. And again, it's the spray application is very targeted to the plants, but we've added that additional 50 foot buffer as well to that boundary.
Okay.
And also because of the water well buffer, there's also additional buffer in that area.
Okay. All right, thank you. Are there any other comments, Mr. Leyden?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right, great. So again, thank you very much for your presentation from the Sudbury Valley Trustees, and thank you to all the residents and the abutters who shared their thoughts with the Select Board as well. So we will wait to hear back from the Sudbury Valley Trustees, who will provide everybody with an email follow up within the next few days, or what's the timeframe on that?
By no later than the end of the week.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, thank you, everybody. So next up on the agenda is a Select Board discussion regarding the transition of the Assistant Town Administrator and the Director of Public Works to contract employees. Currently, both positions are at a certain grade level, but they are not considered contract employees by the town of Littleton. And I know that there's been discussion about doing this with the Director of Public Works position, and also just looking at the grid and the employees who fall within that area. Also, Mr. Leyden's position as well. So I just wanted to bring this before the board this evening for just initial discussion purposes. Just to get your thoughts on how, if there is any interest in in looking into this further and how we might want to proceed with that. I know we'd need to probably involve the Personnel Board. I don't know if Mr. Glavy's actually back on the call or not, but.
Hold on, I need to, sorry, sorry, Paul? Okay, he's coming now.
Okay, perfect. Paul, are you there?
I am now, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, thanks. So I was just introducing the next item on our agenda with respect to transitioning the Assistant Town Administrator as well as the Director of Public Works. Mr. Stoddard's position to contract employees. Currently, they are not. They're actually, I think, the only two at that grade level that are not contract employees. And I know that we've had a few discussions about reorganization. And so I wanted to just bring this to the board tonight, just to so that we can start, begin those discussions and maybe formulate the best way to go forward if there is. and maybe formulate the best way to go forward if there is interest from the board in that regard.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is my ignorance on this subject, but in my experience, contract employees are actually a step down from salaried employees. So I want to make sure we're not talking about a big demotion where they don't get benefits.
Yeah, no. Thank you, Matthew. No, not at all. Not at all. I mean, it's really, you know, and if you look at the positions themselves, I'm really surprised. I was actually very surprised when it was brought to my attention about the Director of Public Works that he is not under contract with the Town of Littleton. And, you know, in retrospect, looking at the Assistant Town Administrator position as well. So again, I just wanted to just begin that discussion with the board and see what your thoughts would be in this regard.
Okay, Madam Chair, then I guess I can, my capacity as a board representative on the Personnel Board, but that's, you know, that we really haven't had any discussions on the, on the Personnel Committee about it, but in a very general sense, it's, it's the board's determination for department heads and, and similar level employees to enter into contract with them. Beyond that, it's kind of a legal question for council, but I don't believe that there's any bylaw and there's certainly not any statute that limits us in that regard. The rest of the town employees are covered in some cases, both by contract, the union contract and by the, you know, steps and lanes that we, you know, we adopt at the town meeting periodically. So it's, as you pointed out, there's a number of positions that we already have contractual relationships with department heads and there's a few that we don't and that we really need to address that. And that's important to them. It should be important to us as well. You know, there's other issues specific to, to the position that we're referring to now as the, the Director of Public Works. And just that name itself is an issue because you and I, you know, well, from a review of town bylaws and various policies that we've never cleaned up all the language in the town bylaws from when it was referred to as the Highway Director to Department of Public Works. So there's, there's a lot of cleaning up that has to go on, on the, on the bylaw and policy end. But, but more front and center to us right now would be the opportunity and the, and the really kind of overdue obligation to, to take care of our Director of Public Works and, and get that position on a level comparable to other department heads of the same stature. And, and actually our Assistant Town Administrator, I actually, until this issue came up recently, wasn't aware that that wasn't being similarly handled as the TA is. So, you know, certainly we should, you know, we should move forward with, with both of those in terms of contract language with guidance from council.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the board?
Is there a reason that these two positions have not been contracted? Is it just historically they weren't? Or anybody have any insight?
Yes. If I may, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
So, yeah, so Matthew, those two positions were yearly contracts. By mass general law, the positions that are identified in the statute is allowed to have three year contract. The Fire Chief, Police Chief, Town Accountant, and then your TA. So we would just have to get clarification on, from Town Council if it would be acceptable to do a multi-year contract with these two positions.
Thank you.
Okay, so to me, that seems like a good place to start. Is with Town Council and just get that clarification. If we could do that, Mr. Insaldi, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. All right, good. Next on the agenda is Select Board Retreat. This was something I had talked to Mr. Insaldi about. This is something that the board had talked about a few months back. And I think now is, now that we've had our, we have our team solidified, it would be a perfect time to make, make those plans. So I didn't know, Mr. Insaldi, if you had any luck finding any proposed facilitators or?
There are. I think we're, we're in this pandemic COVID world where normally retreats, as, as you may recall from the one that we did four years ago, I think it was four years ago. We did that at Littleton Light and we brought in a facilitator. I think the challenging thing with doing a retreat now is it would just have to be virtually. I can't see how we could get folks in a room at this point.
Okay. All right. So is that something that we want to? I mean, do we want to move forward with that now or do we want to wait? And see what's going on with the pandemic? I mean, I'd love to sit in the same room with everybody and have the retreat personally, but who knows how long this is going to go on for, right?
Madam Chair, if I could, I agree with what you said. I think for a retreat to be that workable and have a positive effect, I think we do have to be in the same room and not a remote type of thing. And, and if we can wait till the, the brightest side of the COVID situation gets better, I think that would be a better case. And maybe we can do it down in Florida, too.
Like that.
Hawaii.
Right?
That is an acceptable state, Matthew, right?
You have to quarantine for 14 days and it's a terrible thing to have to stay in Hawaii for 14 days.
All right.
All right, good. I agree. So maybe we'll just wait and get through the holidays and, you know, revisit. We do have the, our budget cycle coming up as well, so.
Madam Chair, I just offer, I obviously hear and agree with all of that, but, you know, as, as things prolong, especially with, you know, new TA in town, although Anthony's really not that new to us. But we shouldn't let the perfect be the enemy of the good if we have to settle at some point for an interim stab at it with a Zoom meeting, you know, serve our own appetizers and drinks and act accordingly. We shouldn't wait forever to have the opportunity to, you know, to have a free forum discussion, which I think, you know, I found value in. We had the most recent one this past summer and Anthony alluded to an early one. You know, it's never time wasted. So ideally, sure, in person, but if we can, if, you know, maybe after the first of the year, we, we should at least do a Zoom meeting or something.
Right. So why don't, and actually, that's a good point, Paul. So maybe we could just do sort of an informal type Zoom meeting without a facilitator and just start that initial discussion and then, you know, revisit it again. And the other thing too is, I mean, it certainly doesn't hurt to have more than one retreat or have more than one discussion like this, you know, whatsoever. So maybe we'll do that in, in January. We'll just plan, just to have a Zoom retreat. And then we'll go from there and eventually, you know, hopefully with the pandemic restrictions are lifted, we can then move forward with having another type with a, with a facilitator. How does that sound?
It strikes me that maybe a facilitator would have ideas about how to do an effective virtual session. I mean, this might be something that they're, that they're dealing with a lot right now. So maybe we, maybe we should get one.
Right. I'm up for either one.
Yeah, we can look at it. Most municipalities have opted, ones that I know are dealing with, my colleagues have opted to hold off too, but certainly I can ask around and see if anybody's had any luck at a successful retreat via Zoom.
Right. Okay. All right. So we'll circle back on that, Mr. Insaldi.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so the next agenda item is Select Board Liaison Updates, Discussion of Funding. I had come across, actually it was a memo from Cheryl Herrickstella. She had shared with the Select Board last year, basically asking us to have a discussion about what our budget requests might be sooner rather than later in the budget process. I know, I believe that currently we're asking department managers to start thinking of their budget requests. And so one of the things I was thinking about was our, we're all liaisons to certain boards and committees. And for the Select Board to start thinking about any requests that might be needed, considerations for those groups during the budget process. And it's not, I know this budget cycle is going to be very different than last year, these budget discussions, but I just think it's important to just keep those, those needs in the forefront and not just forego them just because of the pandemic and the current budget situation that we're experiencing. So I just wanted to bring that to the board to see, to see your thought, to get your thoughts on that. And maybe we really should have a more comprehensive discussion going forward with respect to our goals as well. You know, are we anticipating any funding requests with respect to our specific goals? So I just wanted to get the board thinking about that and then maybe we can have a more detailed discussion in the coming, in an upcoming meeting. What are your thoughts on, on that? I'd like to hear from the other board members. If you have any thoughts. No?
I'm just not sure what your ask is.
Oh, so Paul, so like liaison, so I'm liaison to the Shade Tree Committee and to the Cultural Council.
Right, okay, yeah.
Yeah. And so those would be small asks for them, but also liaison, you know, to master plan implementation to the Housing Trust.
Right. And some are more formal than other. We've got it in a couple of different varieties. Like I'm the official Personnel Committee member and also Chuck and I are on the Sewer Committee, but also kind of unofficially, we get tasks like the brown property negotiation and the, you know, the Nagoy Hill thing that, you know, so they kind of fall in a couple of different categories. So it's a little mushy, you know?
It is mushy, but just start to think about that. And also with respect to our top five goals. I mean, is there any project, you know, I'm thinking, you know, just as far as the space needs, you know, in that project right now, is there any additional funding that we're going to anticipate? We're going to need to help move that project forward in the coming year. Littleton Station is another one. Is there going to be additional funding that we're going to anticipate is going to be needed for that project? So really just, that's along what I'm thinking.
Okay, this is a suggestion for a, for a future agenda item. Rather than the board collectively trying to remember what everybody had for an assignment, if everybody individually remembers what they are working on, you know, we can all send our, you know, an email to the, to Anthony saying, this is my understanding. I'm the board's representative to XYZ, et cetera. And, and, you know, whether it's a formal board appointment or whether it's just a project that we're the lead person on. And then I can kind of look at it and say, what's missing here and, or otherwise just, you know, put them all on a, you know, on a agenda topic where they're listed in advance. We have a chance to think about it. So, you know, we have, Joe's working on something and Matthew is, it's like, oh, okay, you know, I haven't heard about that in a while. I'm curious. Let me, let me ask a question about it, you know, that, that sort of thing.
Yeah. And that's exactly what I was looking for with this, with this agenda item was that direction. So I appreciate that, Paul. Thank you. That sounds like a good plan. So Select Board members will follow up with an email to Mr. Insaldi about any board or committee that you're the liaison on or sitting on. And just so that we can kind of get a handle on what everybody's doing. And then we can also discuss, you know, any funding that might be requested for our goal objectives as well at that time. Okay? Yeah, right.
Of course, a reminder, I'm sure Anthony's already thought of this, but a reminder email, Anthony to follow up will, will be appreciated.
Okay.
You got it.
And next, Mr. Insaldi, we have a CARES Act Funding Update.
Sure. So just to go through, Littleton received $902,926. The first round of reimbursement, which was done prior to June 30th, was $149,550. The second round of reimbursement, which was known and a little bit of unknown at the time, was, and that was by October 31st, I believe, was $366,455. That leaves a remaining balance of $386,922. So as you probably recall, CARES Act funding expires on December 30th of this year. Pending, we get some better news coming from Washington. So with that, I've taken the liberty of looking at ways that we, we can still spend some of that money. So I listed six items here. The first one is the school department already did a keyless entry system, which is using FOBs at the western portion of Shattuck Street. And in speaking with Steve Mark, he asked if we would like to FOB 103, the front door at Town Hall and the two doors on Shattuck Street. So, and connect to their system. So this way it'll eliminate keys and we can control people coming in and out of the, out of meetings. Once we do get back with people in Town Hall. So that would be $12,849.74. With Human Resources going into 307, we're looking at office partitions, which would be coordinating off that room with office for Bridget with a door. It's not actually walls we're building, but partitions that would go about eight feet. So I've been working with our Building Commissioner, Ed Mullin, who's been a tremendous help with this and looking at that and a workstation for the administrative position that's also budgeted in HR as well as a file cabinet system, which will, it's one of those ones that's on a track. So this way it's less space that's taken up than all of the file cabinets. So that and a, and a petition over at the Commissioner's Office, Building Commissioner's Office would be $21,312.81. One thing that I'm very familiar with, because I purchased these in Wenham, was electronic voting. This went over really, really well. It made town meeting really move by. We didn't have one complaint. So I bought in Wenham 500 and it was roughly 17,000 in change. So thinking that we would need at least 1,000 for Littleton, I would obviously speak with the town clerk. And that would be an estimate of about $35,000. Also, electric signboard, so we only have one and it's being used at the transfer station right now. But there's times, especially right now, when we, when the numbers are elevated and we want to get a message out that we could deploy another one in, maybe in the common area, but right now we don't have another one. So Chris is able to get one and that's about $20,000, a little bit less than $20,000 for that. Another thing that the schools have done, which I'd like to do for Town, Town Hall, is air purifiers. So that would be something for the multipurpose room, 103, ones in, in the larger offices that can handle the, a large section of the room at one time. So that's estimated at $10,000. And another thing that I asked is our Town Council to review all his bills and anything that was CARES Act related questions that we may have had of him that he identifies so we can recode that to CARES Act. Because that certainly was something that was unbudgeted and is eligible for CARES Act funding. So right now, without knowing the legal fees, that's about $87,000 that we could, that if the board would allow me to continue on some of these projects, that we could spend down that 300, what was that? The 386 remain. The three eighty six remaining, that is going to go away. And the state has certainly said to us on phone calls to spend, 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 because you don't get any bonus points for giving back the federal government some money. So these are some of the initial things that, that we've identified as could be a, a big help to the town.
Thank you, Mr. Enzaldi, I, I just want to, if I may comment, and I'll open up to the board, I love the idea of the FOBs, the keyless entry system. I, I think that's just a no brainer. I actually wanted them to do that on the snack shack. I had alumni field and they laughed at me, but it's really, as, as far as being penny, penny wise, pound foolish. It, it just say, over time, it saves so much money and it just makes so much sense. The electronic voting at town meeting is something we've talked about in the past. And I think certainly, you know, with some very large projects that have happened in the past, as well as some anticipated in the future would just make sense. If we could avail ourselves to electronic voting, especially if we can cover the cost under the CARES Act. I think it just, it made, that makes perfect sense. One of the other things I was going to ask you, what are some of the other categories or expenditures that would fall under CARES Act? Is there anything like?
Anything like what? It, it has to be unbudgeted, it, it has to be a COVID related. So what, did you have something in mind?
Well, I was just thinking like, could we do anything in 103, any improvements in there? Or in the multipurpose room or anything like that, but if it needs to be COVID, tied to COVID related, I don't know.
So a lot of municipalities did furniture and, and what they did is they spread out their staff. So that was an, an approved expenditure for COVID. So if there's something to that, right now, there is some been, some work done at Town Hall with separating staff. Certainly, 307 fits into this category and not making the TA's office with six people in that small area, so. You know, I, I'm gonna put our heads together with town staff, I've been speaking with Chris and, and Chief Pennard. And I spoke with Chief Wodzinski today too about some ideas that we could spend down, so.
Okay, yeah, I hate to leave any of it on the table. Is there any other comments from other board members?
Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Yeah, it, it, this is kind of reiterative, but, and I realize that this is how the whole thing started, but if we're, to follow up on your point, if we're looking to identify if there are other potential. Needs that aren't being met, then maybe we cast that net again and a little bit wider to see if other departments, you know, just put it out to them. This is what we, you know, we have an opportunity that we don't want to miss and, you know, think, what, what do you have out there that, that's not currently being funded? That is potentially impacted by our current, current COVID situation. And I apologize if this is, you know, already been done exhaustively, but it can't hurt, I make the ask again of the various departments, park and rec, library, you name it. Who knows who might have something, conservation, for all we know, there's something out there, I, I don't know, on trails that, I'm not thinking that, that might be justifiable. But that's one thought, the other thought is just, on one of the specific items here, and I'm supportive of all of them at, at first blush, is the electronic voting. That, that with town, town meeting, I'm, I'm sure there won't be an issue, but we, we have to be mindful to include the moderator in that discussion. Because of course, town meeting is the moderator's purview, not, not especially ours, we set the warrant, he runs the meeting. So I'm sure he'll be cooperative and supportive, but we've got to make sure we don't neglect that.
Yeah, that's a great point, Paul, I, I can reach out to Tim and, and have the conversation. I'm sure that, I'm not sure what Carlisle has done, if, if they've gone to this, a lot of communities have, but I certainly can reach out to Tim, that, that wouldn't be a problem.
Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Uh, I love this list so much and I'm so happy you brought it to us, I think it's great. I would actually probably put electronic voting at the top. I think that that has been something I've heard over and over is the sort of, the pain of the town meeting. Why not go crazy with keyless entry and do every municipal building in town, I mean, do all the schools and everything, I, you know, I don't know how practical it is, but. And then, you know, it struck me that I, I suspect there are expenses related to outdoor town meeting, which are unique and COVID related. That I wonder if we could purchase some, some of the gear that we've been renting and, and like make it less expensive in the future.
Yeah, so to, to your point, Matthew, so we looked at, when I was here a few years ago, we looked at fobbing the whole building. And it was pretty close to a hundred thousand dollars, believe it or not, to do all the doors, which would have been fantastic, you're right, to have that. Would really be nice, so I don't have to walk around with a pocket full of keys. So, but the, the, the challenge with doing all the doors is it has to be completed before December 30th, with the holidays. That's, that's why we identified the four most important doors, certainly if there's another CARES package. Yeah, I think that that's a, a, a great thing that we can expand on.
Sounds, sounds reasonable.
And Paul, to your point, we are having a, a meeting, Joe and I, a staff meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock. So this will be on our list and we certainly will pass on to the departments and let them know about these projects. For those that are not directly affected with these, let them know that what we're, what we're thinking and if they have ideas.
And I, I gotta admit, I was, I was losing track myself of the, the end of the year deadline you're operating under as well, so I appreciate that.
You know, certainly there's also opportunities that you can use this for personnel too, so we can find out if there's been a backlog. I, you know, we, we heard from Kathy Miller last week, she's been by herself, I don't know if there's any type of backlog. But it could be the ability to maybe look at. Using some of this for overtime, for, for different purposes, that, you know, depending on what it is. So we, we can flush that out at tomorrow's staff meeting. And see what departments can put their heads together and come up with, obviously time is of the essence and we, we need to move on some of this stuff.
Mr. Enzaldi, we had actually been talking for quite some time about. Preserving a lot of electronic files at Town Hall, going paperless. Do you think something like that, we could, I don't know if we could pull it together by the short timeframe, but at least maybe getting scanners or software or something like that?
Yeah, so that's been an item that I did request when I was in Wenham and we got the answer no at first. Then we had a, uh, Hamilton, Town of Hamilton join me and pushing back on the state a little bit, and then we got a, a maybe. So we, we may be able to, I, I, I can look into that and see if it's changed, certainly to get the software. That might be something we could do, that's probably about. You know, maybe about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars just to get the software and then we'd have to start from scratch at that point. There's no money to have a company come in and scan all those, the state has said no previously on, on that request.
Right, right, in, in, in that regard, I know other municipalities have actually used CPC funding through the historic bucket. It was covered under that for historic preservation, so.
Right, if you're using it to, yep, to preserve those historic documents, it's certainly.
Right, so, all right, good, good work on this, thank you, and just keep us posted on, on what else we can come up with.
Will do, any objection to me proceeding with some of these, I, you know?
No, not at all.
All right, great, Joe and I will start paying in this, so starting tomorrow.
All right, great, thanks. So next on the agenda, I did prepare a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, here's just for, if anybody wanted to see what 307 would look like. That's, so this would be a little office, again, the petition wouldn't go quite to the ceiling, it would probably fall about a foot to eighteen inches below. And then there'd be a workstation here, these are those roll, rolling filing cabinets. So it would kind of look like that, so when you walk in, so Bridget would have some privacy, these files are lockable. And it certainly takes up a lot less room when they're in this format.
Those are nice.
Yeah.
Those are great, are there any other departments that could utilize those file cabinets? Those type of file cabinets?
Yeah, so I did have a conversation with, with the, the building commissioner and we talked about his area. And the key is that he has so many file cabinets that he also, at, at a request that's coming up later this evening, is to start the process of hiring a local building inspector. So we actually need that space for, for a desk, so it's not as easy. We did look at it, but right now, Ed, we're kind of holding off until we see what happens.
Okay, and just one other quick comment, so what about the Elder and Human Services, one of, like those meeting rooms or the conference rooms? I'm going to call it the knitting room. Maybe some storage systems to help organize those rooms, I don't know if that would be covered or not. But maybe you could ask Ashley.
Yeah, I, I could talk to Ashley about that, you know, it, it would have to be something that's already, you know, prefab and not something that can be built. Because I just don't think that there'd be enough.
Right, right, yeah, exactly, okay, all right, great, thanks, thank you, Anthony.
Hey, Madam Chair, a question?
Sure.
We, we were gonna, are we gonna have a goals discussion?
Um, we are, oh, did we skip over that? We kind of did, yeah, select board goals, sorry. Um, yeah, so I actually did want to talk about that and that kind of fell in line with the other discussion about the board and liaison updates. Just to talk about our goals and just to, maybe we can revisit that when we have the other discussion about the boards and liaisons. It's all about the budget discussions coming up and anticipating that whole process.
Can I just offer something to Madam Chair? Yeah, it is about the budget in some respect and, you know, I don't, I don't know what other members' personal feelings are, but we obviously. While we were, I thought pretty good about identifying. Consensus aggressive goals this past summer, we had a great session in El Forno. But we've been kind of the, the victim of both the COVID and the Zoom era and the turnover with personnel. But now that, you know, we have a TA in place and I know Anthony's intention that he's underway with is to meet individually with each of the members. I intend to use my session with Anthony to discuss some of that and maybe after we each individually have a, a talk with him about, you know, the goals that we have. Reflective of our joint, um, agreed upon goals, that we bring it back in a little bit more of an informed discussion. I don't mind discussing it right now, but I just, I think we'll probably. Without much structure, I don't know how much we'll accomplish now until each of us have had a chance to kind of check in with Anthony and he has a chance to process it a little bit.
Okay.
Just my thought, but I'm very interested to hear what other people have to say.
I, I, I would, I would love to have a, a review and an update from everyone. And I think like talking to Anthony first is a great idea. I, I just, I did have one item on that though, that I wanted, I needed to talk to you about, Paul, which was, I think at the last, not the last meeting, but the last full meeting we had. I mentioned that Pine Tree Park had been approved by the state to get a new septic system. And either you or Chuck, I think, made a comment like, hey, why don't they hook into the town sewer, does, do you, does that sound familiar?
Yeah, I remember the discussion, I, I don't remember who had the, who had the to do list item about following up on that, but, yeah, I, I, and I may well have been the person who raised the issue that, hey, what, did that ever come up? It, it certainly should be followed up on, and thank you, Matthew, for bringing that up again, it just, it's a no brainer to me. And maybe there's a reason why that isn't happening as easily as it, it had, because, yeah, it, it sounds like on an independent track. Pine Tree Park is getting an upgrade, meanwhile, right next door, we have our own existing sewer system getting upgraded. And I know that they're a federally funded outfit, even though their commissioners are either, you know, if they're not appointed, they're elected at the town level. But still, what, you know, we're all the same town, but, you know, I don't know, maybe now, now that Anthony's here, we can dump this in his lap.
Well, I, and I, I spoke to Lisa, I spoke to the executive director in LA change, she said that she had spoken to the town. And I'm not sure who she spoke to several times and they had said that it was a no go. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, it may have been several years ago, but I'm trying to like close the loop on that and figure out like, you know, what, what to do next. Because I, I agree with you, it does seem like a silly to spend three quarters of a million dollars in two places.
I, I don't know the answer, but I, I agree with you and, I don't know, Anthony, you know, obviously this is hitting you out of the blue. But do you have a thought about how to, how to pursue that one next?
Um, you know, I'd have to put some thought into it and, and like to talk through it a little bit more with Matthew and then I can come up with a game plan.
Yeah, you're aware, Matthew's on the Housing Authority Commission as well as being a selectman, right, or are you?
That's correct, yeah, I'm on the Housing Authority.
Okay, no, I, I wasn't aware of that.
But, I mean, that's how I knew about it, because, you know, it's on the, the capital plan this year. And one of them was three quarters of a million dollars for a new septic system from this, from, from the state.
Yeah, it's a good thing, we just want to make sure we don't miss a chance for it to be a better thing.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'd love to have a conversation, I, I, I think we could come up with some ideas to deal with that.
All right, great, Mr. Knox, do you have any comments?
Just one comment back to Matthew was that I'd love to know who along the way said no to that, that possibility. And the second thing is, Anthony, is it possible that you could send out a list of our goals again as a refresher? Because as the year goes on and we're involved with so many different topics and with COVID going on in Zoom, that some things get bypassed.
Yeah, I could, I could certainly do that, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, good, so I put together a presentation just to give, for informational purposes for the board. We recently had a report done for the Affordable Housing Trust. So, I mean, in the essence of time, I'm certainly willing to table this to another meeting. Or if you want me to, I can just proceed with it tonight, it's up to you. I know we're running a little bit behind schedule.
Let's do it when we have time to really talk about it, there's so much data in here that I think it's important to give it the attention it deserves.
Okay, I appreciate that, Matthew.
I know that you have also, you and I have both seen the full report, this is an extract of it.
It is.
Way more than is even here, right?
Yeah, exactly, so there's actually, so there's this, there's the. The main report and then there was a summary put together from that report and then I broke it down either further just into this, just into a PowerPoint. Just so that board members can really sort of understand housing needs in Littleton. And, and really this is just for informational purposes and talking points as you move forward with your own initiatives and goals, whatever those may be. So it's housing, understanding needs in O1, O1, 460. And what we did was we took, over the years, as you know, there's been a number of reports that have been put together. That speak to housing needs in the town of Littleton. So the Affordable Housing Trust utilized the services of Metro West Collaborative Development. And we basically gave them all this information that we've compiled, that the town has had. And we said to her, here, basically figure it out and just come, you know, digest it, interpret it. Come back and give us some form of summation or, you know, just really a universal. Summary of, of all this information that we can then utilize to really help pinpoint housing needs in the town of Littleton. So this report, as you see the sources in the left hand column there, and a lot of it was recent too, like the Littleton Village Station Report. The Littleton Common Revitalization Report and, you know, older reports like the Housing Production Plan and whatnot. So this presentation is broken down into six, six parts, findings, housing stock, housing versus income, the senior sell off. And a recap and then a conclusion, so we can go to the next slide. So the findings of the report just determined the median home value in Littleton, you can see is quite high. So the findings of the report just determined the median home value in Littleton, you can see, is quite high. And really, the value for a single-family home and a condo, which surprised me, isn't that far behind for the median home value for a single-family home. Rent is, I feel expensive. Other people would argue with you and just really feel that that's not that expensive. You know, thirteen hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom apartment in Lowell. And then it also dove into wages. What do people in Littleton earn? And really, the average local wage for industries in Littleton is eighty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. We also learned that half of our apartment units are subsidized. And half of, forty percent of all rental units, that would be housing and apartments, are also subsidized. And we really do have a shortage of rental units here in the town of Littleton. Next slide. One more. And so as you can see, our housing stock is out of balance. This is a slide taken from Data Town. We have improved a little bit. But mostly you can see single-family detached homes just dominate our housing stock in Littleton. Only fifty percent of our housing stock is rental. There's a four percent vacancy rate. And like I said before, fifty percent of Littleton's rental apartments are subsidized. What really surprised me in the report is that over the past eighteen years, only a hundred ninety-seven building permits were issued for multifamily units. And a hundred and forty-four of those are when we built the Village Green at Fifteen Great Road. And then the, all the other permits, six hundred and fifty-six permits were issued for newly single-family homes. And one thing I just want to add to this, as you know, based upon our recent discussion over setting the tax rate and comments from Kathy Miller, our assessor, we have a lot more development coming down the road that's in the works. And those are all single-family homes. So our housing stock continues to remain undiversified, unfortunately. Next slide, please. So like I said, ninety-three percent of our housing stock consists of single-family homes. Eighty percent of Littleton seniors live in single-family homes. And this really took, took me back. Because if you think about it, they're living in these big homes, you know, my parents included. You know, they basically are utilizing one bedroom, but they're living in three and four-bedroom units that they, they no longer need. But really, unfortunately, they have nowhere to go. So they're, they're living in oversized, oversized homes that could basically be used for families. You know, with one or two children, could easily move into those homes and utilize those, those housing units. Next slide, please. So how much income is needed to live in Littleton? And what we learned is that really eighty percent of the area AMI and sixty percent of the AMI is really the, I'm going to call it the, the sweet spot, so to speak, with respect to housing for Littleton. And this is based upon what we've learned about what people earn in the town of Littleton. So to afford a one-bedroom home in Littleton and a two-bedroom home, you can see the prices there, the sixty-two thousand range and the seventy thousand range. And then also, at sixty percent AMI, you would need to earn forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. The next slide, please. So this is based upon, these are all the major industries in the town of Littleton. This is from Data Town. And like we saw in a previous slide, the average wage for the town of Littleton for these industries is eighty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Only seven of these industries, people working in only seven out of fifteen of these industries would be able to afford the median area rent or a median family home here in the town of Littleton. Next slide, please. So again, the median home sales for a condo is, in a single-family home, is in the mid four hundred thousand dollar range. And then the next slide. And again, market rate rental, we did see the median rate rental was around one thousand three hundred and forty dollars. But really, this is more realistic if you get online and you look at what rental costs are going for here in the town of Littleton. I mean, a two-bedroom for two thousand dollars, I mean, is so expensive. It's, it's like a mortgage payment. And really, the rental units in the town of Littleton, there aren't many. And so really, there's a high demand for rental housing in, in our community. The next slide, please. And so this will go to show you how much income would be needed to, to be able to rent, to afford to rent in the town of Littleton without being cost-burdened. So if you look at that sixty-four thousand and that seventy-eight thousand dollar range right there, just keep that in mind as we go down to the next following slide. And as well as what it would take to buy a home, what you could afford to purchase a home in Littleton at the median home value of four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. There's very few homes at that price right now in the town of Littleton. And you would require, you know, you need five percent down or what you could afford if you had even twenty percent down. That's how much you would need to earn in order to afford a four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar home here in town. The next slide, please. Oh, go to the next slide. I didn't mean that to be in there. It's my niece. So this shows you the number of households in Littleton that are cost-burdened. And what cost-burden means is that they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. You're not supposed to spend more than your thirty percent of your income on, on your housing needs. So you can see it's broken down by households, like the age groups, like fifteen through twenty-four is considered cost-burdened. And then the owner-occupied households, it's really interesting because it's the younger groups. But then you also see the spike in the oldest, the over sixty-five age group. And these, that's for owner-occupied. And then for rental housing, look at the cost burden for rental ages fifteen through twenty-four. That's really our younger population. And then again, it creeps up on the, on the over sixty-five age group as well. So I thought these, these charts were interesting to include as well. And then can we go to the next slide? So this was really interesting to me. So two-thirds of our housing stock is made up of three, over three, three-plus bedroom homes. But family with children actually occupy fewer than half of them. That would be because the majority of them are owned by our senior citizens. And like it says in the next line, they're headed by someone over fifty-five and over. Sixteen percent of those are somebody over the age of seventy. We know our housing stock is out of balance. And really, what it is, the reason for that is that we aren't experiencing the senior sell-off. And that's a term that is used not just here, it's used in the industry. And it's not just an issue here in the town of Littleton. It's actually an, an issue that's arising across the state. Senior citizens really are having extreme difficulty finding a place to live that would be more affordable than the home that they're currently living in. And so really, in order to kind of revitalize or really move our housing market to create the type of housing that we need by freeing up our existing housing stock, we really need to create housing to meet the needs of our seniors. And it would, what it would do is then free up their homes for younger families who, you know, are looking for a bigger home, you know, to reside in. So we really need to focus on the senior sell-off and just really get down to the price point that we need in our community for our senior citizens. Have the next slide, please. And so the other reason for this too, is not only for the senior sell-off, but what we're also experiencing in the town of Littleton specifically is a decline in the population of ages eighteen through thirty-four. And this is a slide taken from Data Town, and you can see that dip. Ages twenty right through thirty-four, we are below the state average for those age groups living in the town of Littleton. And really, that's our, those are our younger workers or, you know, that's our workforce. And really, it's the future of Littleton. We need to be able to, if we want to sustain our community, we need to attract all sorts, all different age groups to support our workforce. And if we don't have housing for those age groups, they're getting priced out and they can't afford to live here. It really is going to have an impact on our town. And the other thing I really, you know, also want to emphasize is that this age group, you know, and I was once this age group, these are people that grew up in Littleton. You know, they grew up here. They spent their whole lives here. Their parents are here. Their friends are here. And they're getting priced out just as much as our seniors are, who really are having a hard time finding suitable housing to downsize and remain here. A lot of our seniors are moving away as well. So this, you know, that's really a big piece of our housing, our housing issue here in Littleton as well. It's not only our seniors, but it's also this age group as well. Can the next slide, please? And so this is just an example of someone who is priced out. Alice is a fictitious person. But Alice's circumstances are resonated throughout the town of Littleton with many of our senior citizens. As you can see, she can afford minimal rent because she lives on a very limited income. And she has nowhere to go. She can't afford the type of rental housing that we currently have available. She can afford four hundred and sixty dollars a month in rent, but rent for a one-bedroom in Littleton is thirteen hundred and fifty-four dollars. So Alice has nowhere to go. So she's, she's living in her big, oversized home with the empty bedrooms. And unfortunately, another statistic here is that thirty percent of our seniors live alone. And sixty-five percent of those living alone own their own home. And a majority of them, a lot of them are considered low-income and very low-income, and they really can't afford the rental income that is needed in order for them to get out from the burden of homeownership and move into a nice, you know, rental living community. Can we have the next slide, please? And so this is another example. This is somebody who would like to move to Littleton with her family and she is, you know, both professional people. They earn about ninety thousand a year and it's still not enough for them to purchase a single family home here in, in the town of Littleton. So this is a family that would like to live here, but unfortunately, they can't. They certainly probably would love to move into Alice's house, but Alice has nowhere to go. So currently, this is, you know, just another example of somebody who cannot afford to live here in Littleton. Can the next slide, please? And this is another slide. This is John, and he works in one of the retail trade establishments here in Littleton. As you can see, he earns a very minimal wage. He is actually about, considered about fifty percent AMI. And he can't afford to rent here in Littleton and he can't afford to live here in Littleton. And I thought this was interesting because people in this income bracket, there's no units available in Littleton here that they would be able to move to. And there's three thousand people in Littleton who work in the trades, which the average local income is less than eighty percent AMI. And we just don't have the housing available for these individuals. And they're really vital resources that we need here in our community. They provide a vital service to us. Can the next slide, please? And then this is just another example of housing need in Littleton. It's a single parent. You know, recently divorced, but he wants to stay close to home where his kids live. You know, they go to Littleton Public School System. He wants to stay close to his family. But he is really would like a three-bedroom rental unit. And those are basically very scarce here in the town of Littleton. Can the next slide, please? And so, oh, this slide got screwed up. So this is basically the Hager Homestead model. This is what was used with the Hager Homestead project. And there are a significant number of seniors and young adults who live and work in our community that would benefit from housing. Price for individuals and families earning between twenty thousand to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And unfortunately, this got cut off at the top. But as you can see, Hager Homestead is offering us one unit at sixty percent AMI. And that's the forty-seven thousand four hundred dollar range. The rest of the units, and I don't know what the price point was at the one-bedroom unit. But it's certainly, the eighty percent AMI is more affordable. It would satisfy the needs of some people for housing in Littleton. But really, we need to dive deeper than that. We really need the sixty percent and the fifty percent AMI. Because it's just a large population of people that need, need housing at that, at that price point. And can we have the next slide? I think we skipped one. So these are the conclusions. Our housing stock is out of balance. There's over three thousand people who work in Littleton with the average local, local income is less than eighty percent AMI. Seven or less, local industries provide a wage which would allow for housing to pay the median rent without being cost-burdened. Most wages in town would not permit the purchaser of a median-valued home or even a starter home in Littleton. And basically, there's no housing options for the people who provide essential services to our community. And a majority of our senior households in Littleton are considered low-income and eligible for housing at eighty percent AMI or less. If we have one more slide. And this just, just goes to show you the, the plan of the master, the master plan, vision and goals. And we're, again, I had brought this up at a previous meeting, but really, we're falling, we, we continue to fall short on this, on this goal of just providing housing, different variety of housing types and employment opportunities for, you know, our children, our seniors, families, employees, and to create more reasonably priced rental housing, which will basically solve the problem for two demographics, the younger workers that were mentioned in this, in this presentation, as well as our seniors. So I really believe in the rental housing. The Affordable Housing Trust has had discussions about this. And I know that there's discussions at the planning board level going on right now that we really need to diversify our housing stock and become open to the prospect of multi-unit housing here in the town of Littleton because it's really what we do need for our seniors, as well as the younger age groups that are unable to work and live in, live and work in the same community, which is really very important. I don't know if there's one more slide or not, Joe? Ah, perfect. This is what I was hoping this slide. So back one. So this is just an example of all of these businesses here in the town of Littleton that we rely on every day. You know, from our school department to our first responders, our police department and our fire department. You know, town employees, right down to the people that serve our coffee, do not make enough money to live in the town of Littleton. And they're getting priced out. And eventually, you know, they're, they need to move further out west to afford housing. You know, how much longer are they going to want to commute to Littleton to work here? And I, I think that's really something that we need to consider strongly when we think about the sustainability and vitality of our community going forward. We really need to create diverse housing for a variety of people with, you know, different economic backgrounds and professional, levels of professional careers. Because, you know, that's really what's going to sustain our community as a whole. And it's really what's important, important to us, and it's what's in the master plan. So I'm excited about the Littleton Station Project. Station project. I think there's a lot of potential there to meet a lot of the need that's been conveyed in this, in this report and as well as, you know, going forward and looking at the revitalization of Littleton Common as well. But for the short term, it's really focusing on Littleton Station and seeing what kind of housing that we can create from that project that will really benefit our community. That's it.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
If I may, I, this is a wonderful report. It's well put together. It really spells out everything that you said, but it takes us back 10 or 15 years ago when the feeling of the town was, we didn't want that. We wanted one acre zoning and wanted single family houses. It's only recently that we've, we've found that we were probably heading in the wrong directions. So whatever can be done in the future to try to alleviate this problem is great, but to do it sometimes is tough because the amount of land left is, is being used up and a lot of it's being used as single family houses. So it's, it's an ongoing problem, but I, I welcome this, this report and whatever we can do, even with Littleton Station, anything like that, I think helps alleviate that problem. And it goes back to even when Kath was, was with me, we were talking about where we could move to get out of this house. And we had the same problem. We wanted to stay in town, but there was no place to go.
Right. Yeah. It's, and I just feel like it's really come to a head, Joe. Like it really is a serious issue here in town. You know, you talk to any of the seniors and they say it. They have nowhere to go, but really we're, we're starting to really feel the impact of that. So, you know, I think, maybe Matthew can give more of an update about the Littleton Station project, but personally, I'm really excited about that project because I think it's going to help, if it, it could help a lot of people in our community and really maybe start that senior sell-off that we're, we've been waiting for. So.
Madam Chair, can I piggyback a little bit on what, what Joe said, what you presented? Try to be both positive and realistic at the same time. This is as good a report that I've seen that crystallizes in a fashion that people can grasp what we're really up against in terms of housing options in town. The sad thing is we've seen several, I've seen several reports like this, not dating back to before I was on the board the first time. I'm talking about 1987, I got elected and before that I was on what we had, you know, one version of the Affordable Housing Committee we had at that point. You're on the Affordable Housing Trust right now. I was on the Housing Authority back in those days as Matthew is now. And the issues, this is the frustrating part, were largely the same. The dollar numbers have changed and, and it's only gotten worse. The challenge has gotten worse, but a ray of hope, you know, Joe alluded to it is, I think there's a more or less, I sense in any event, a more or less community recognition that this is something we do have to address, but we can't do it in a vacuum. It has to be done in recognition of other, you know, other priorities the town has, preserving open space, preserving the field of town that either they grew up in or moved to and like it that way. So our housing solutions, the challenge is on us, us and other boards that work with us and other entities that have a role in it to define housing solutions that don't disrupt that balance. And I think the town will be supportive there. And, you know, not to belabor it, this is a terrific topic and we really should bring it back again, you know, and with, with, maybe an objective of coming out with some, some more to-do list items. But our limited resources are money, our land and its regulation. And you know, land is limited, but we have a couple of, of things that we can do there. We're, you know, we, we have, you know, taken baby steps in the town, was very supportive of it, as was the state with the, the purchase of the brown property. That's just, that's the sort of thing where we can put land to use. We don't have a whole lot of other town land that we can put to use. Money, you know, you're on the committee that, that helps us decide how to spend some of that growing fund with the, the Affordable Housing Trust money. And then the other thing is regulation and the planning board is more engaged now than I would say they have been in the past about making things happen in a way that encourages both, incentivizes people in the private sector to develop the sort of housing we need. But the other, the last other piece, and I'll, I'll shut up after this, is we, we need to figure out what proactive role we can do on a case-by-case basis. You cited the, the, the station project. Let's use that as a model and not stop there, but like move, move from there and start to identify specifically four or five other sites where we can make something physically happen that comes out in units that doesn't disrupt the character of the town as we know it and yet serves the need. The private sector in small pieces addresses this, but there's, you know, it's really at the high end of the market. We have a village and the, and the development out on, on Spectrum Pond Road, boy, they, they couldn't be sold quick enough. And it was, it speaks to the need and the prices are amazing, but we, we've got to find a way, you know, to inject the town into that whole dynamic so that we can create those kind of options, you know, at a lower price point. And I'll stop at that.
Right. And I think you really touched on it there, Paul. And, you know, I know that the town, we, the board, we own some land here in town. And we've been, we're going to be gifted some town, some land and property like the Turkey Farmhouse and five acres of land there. And I really think, you know, through the Affordable Housing Trust, we could partner with the state and really get to that level of affordability that we need in some respects. But I think you brought up a good point, doing so without, you know, really trying to minimize impact on the character of the town and do something that fits with the town. You know, I think it's something that we can achieve, but it's definitely, we need to have a thoughtful process and discussion about it and plan. So I'm glad you mentioned that.
Give me your, Matthew.
Hi. Sorry about that. I was still muted. I, you know, I'm on the Housing Authority. I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust, the Station Area Committee, and I'm also the liaison with the Council on Aging. And I think I have a multifaceted like view of this. You know, in the Housing Authority, I'm seeing firsthand serious challenges of municipally managed affordable senior housing. And on, you know, speaking to the COA, I'm learning a lot about what the seniors are looking for. They have a sub, a subcommittee, a vision committee. In the last, last month, they, they set their goals. I think they're really taking the lead on organizing a survey, gather data and compare the needs of our town with other communities and create a timeline for evaluating input. And I, but, but most, most exciting, you know, the Station Area Committee, I think the Stationary is poised to answer the needs of the seniors in a huge way. And in fact, I, I think the development of the Stationary is a way of addressing a laundry list of affordable housing needs. I mean, for the seniors and a lot of other people, I'm, I'm really psyched that the, the COA and the Affordable Housing Trust and the Stationary are all kind of coming together right now. And I do think there's, that there seems to be some kind of critical mass happening where I think people are ready to agree that, you know, 90%, one acre single family houses maybe isn't the best thing in the world. So I, I'm optimistic that we're on the cusp of something great and we're going to be able to address the needs in the near future.
Right. Thanks, Matthew. All right. Wonderful. Thank you. So the next thing on the agenda we have was scheduling of department and committee budget meetings. So Mr. Glady, this was something that you had mentioned to me.
Yeah. I, I see the, thank you for putting it on and I'm, and I'm as mindful as anyone else is in the lateness of the hour. I, I see the schedule there and I'm, I'm, I'm cool with that, although I will point out that what's necessary this year shouldn't be our norm going forward. What's proposed here is a bunch of joint meetings to hear from our departments, joint meetings with the Finance Committee, you know, for January, I guess going into February. What should have happened, and, you know, and we discussed this back in August. I know we, you know, not only did we have the whole COVID Zoom personnel turnover issues going on. So it's, you know, I'm not blaming anybody for that. It's all understandable. But what should have happened is we probably in September should have been talking to our department heads to translate our goal priorities into budget objectives. Have the department heads take that information, hear from them at the same time, what, what they want to accomplish, and then let them go off and work on proposals that they come back and, and share with us that we can give our blessing to. Then they in turn go off to the Finance Committee. Now we're kind of condensing all that and, and I get it, we have to do that now. I just want to note for the record that that's not what we should be doing as an ongoing practice and that, you know, that, that's not being accepted as the norm, you know, for, for years to come.
Right. No, I agree with you. So I guess my question to you, Mr. Anzaldi, is does this, how does this coincide with the regular budget process or is this part of it?
This is part of it. So this is the similar, yeah, this is exactly what happened last year. You, you met a couple of nights, or this is what I was told that happened. You met a couple of nights, long meetings, and then on Saturday, you, you met to go over the school, police, fire, the bigger departments. So this is the dates right now that Cheryl and I had put aside as dates to shoot for, for those meetings. Now, of course, if, I think this year it's going to be remote. I don't see going in person. I guess one question that was brought up in speaking to at least one member of the FINCOM is the Saturday meeting. Is there some other, is the pleasure of the board to do something different there or would you just assume keep everything the same?
Oh, I, well, I think, I thought last year went wonderful. I would just assume keep it the same. And I know, I think last year too, we discussed, and I can't remember if we actually did it, but any of the smaller departments, I think we did invite a few of them back for another meeting, just to get some more information from them or have further discussion beyond the initial meetings. So, yeah, I thought the process went great last year. I don't, welcome to hear from other members of the board.
Other than the lead up to it, Madam Chair, does, you know, just to reiterate a little bit what I said a moment ago, this year we have an excuse. Last year we really didn't, but the, I agree with you. I think the actual Saturday session was structured and conducted well, but we would have been better, better served to have been more engaged. I mean, to do our own oversight responsibilities, to perform that and to, you know, to kind of promote our own individual and collective priorities, we need to have been more engaged earlier. And this is fine now in my mind. Zoom, of course, you know, it's going to be remote, I think this year, of course, but I, I think there's value. I always think there's value in having the group session so that not only do we, I think there's two, two positive, two very positive points. One is if everybody's there listening, they get to hear what everyone else is doing. So they're not in their own silos. So they know, you know, they get to compare what other departments are asking for. And we get to hear everything at the same time, real time, rather than having it stretched out over a period of weeks. And sometimes, you know, if you're hearing on, you know, Highway of Public Works Department one week and you don't hear from police till a month later, you know, you'd be unable to kind of put it all together, but not to belabor the point, but you know, in the long, I, I think there's value in having the one, one session for all or most of the big players in the budget picture. And, you know, let's just get through it this year as best we can. And hopefully by the beginning of the budget process next year, we'll be back on a, a norm that gets us more engaged at an earlier point.
Right. And I agree with you on that, Mr. Glady. And one of the things I really think we need to get back to as well is not, I, I want to, how am I going to wear this? Not being caught off guard. Like, you know, all of a sudden it's like, oh, you know, someone comes before us with either a grant proposal or, you know, a budget request. And it's like, well, where did that come from? You know, I think really just trying to get better organized and like you said, have those discussions earlier. We do have a schedule where we're supposed to have, you know, all those follow-ups and discussions and we definitely need to get back on track with that. I agree with you 100%. Any other comments from board members? No? Okay. So we're okay with that schedule. Confirmation of waivers of license renewal fees. Do you want to comment on this, Mr. Anzaldi or?
Joe, do you want to take this? I know you've worked with Diane on licenses.
Sure. Madam Chair, back on the November 23rd meeting when we considered waiving fees for license renewals, within the, the motion, we had a couple of classes of licenses that we then had to sort of question whether or not we were granting a waiver of those. So working with Diane and based on some other emails with board members as far as the, the actual vote, recommending basically affirming the November 23rd vote to specify the waiver of fees and then the remaining fees, which is in the subsequent motion and worded as to either waive or not waive the class one and two auto licenses, lodging, house license and valuable secondhand and good licenses for calendar year FY21. So we can at least make sure that we have a vote that accurately reflects, reflects the board's intentions on both sets of fees. You may recall that at that November 23rd meeting, there was a spreadsheet that we identified a total. Were to waive all the, the fees, it was approximately $51,000. If we ended up waiving just the on-premise, off-premise, common Vic entertainment and auto amusement licenses, those were around 40, 41, 42,000. So that's where vast majority were already sort of being taken care of with that first motion.
Okay. I do, yeah. So there was some follow-up questions regarding exactly the scope of the vote. So I don't know if board members want to comment, I think, about what their recollection is or what they felt their, the intention of the vote was and if we did collectively feel that it should also include the class one and class two auto licenses, lodging, house and valuable secondhand goods licenses.
Madam Chair?
Certainly.
I was under the impression we were going to waive all of them.
Okay. All right. With, Mr. Knox, do you have any thoughts?
I don't remember talking anything about the class one and class two auto license.
Mr. Glady, do you have any comments?
Yep. I agree with Joe. I don't remember it being discussed, but I also know that the horse is out of the barn and there's no way in the world that I would support pulling back something that we've essentially telegraphed is going to happen. So Merry Christmas, everyone. We hope all the businesses that benefit from this will appreciate that this will not be the norm going forward. But I think it's probably all in the better interest of the town right now that we help everybody else that we can.
Okay. Yeah, that, my recollection is too, it's kind of a little bit of both. I think with the number we discussed, it would have incorporated all of these licenses, but with the actual vote, it didn't. So I'm glad that we, you know, we brought it back just to clarify that. So and to Paul's point that, you know, horse is out of the barn. So we'll just go ahead and incorporate them all unless there's any other, any objection from the board? No? Okay. So we have a motion?
Oh, okay. I will move that the board affirm its vote of November 23rd, 2020 to waive the fees for all on-premises and off-premises alcohol, common vittular, entertainment and common vixeler, entertainment and auto amusement licenses for calendar year 2021, and move that the board vote to waive not waive fees for Class 1 and 2 auto licenses, lodging, house and valuable secondhand goods licenses for calendar year 2021. I think Matthew looked like he was trying to.
Sorry, I think I think that second one should just be waived. You shouldn't read the not waived part.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you for thinking for me. I wasn't doing it myself. That was, yeah, correct wave, no.
I second the motion.
The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox? Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as stated by Mr. Glady. And so we are on to our next agenda item.
Your annual license renewals. So this is for everything. So, Madam Chair, Diane Dickerson has been working on these. And and she's gathered most of the information. Very few stragglers out there. And what she's looking for is basically for the, because we're running out of time, as we always do at the end of a calendar year, for the board to approve the the licenses at this time, subject to the satisfactory inspections and submission of all the, any missing documents. And like I said, there's just a couple fees and payments we just took care of. And obviously, I will be reviewing everything prior to these licenses being issued.
Any questions or comments from the board? Is we're ready for our?
Well, just this, always appreciate Diane's oversight on this whole process. And I think our supportive votes here are on the assumption that everybody that being awarded a license or a renewal, the assumption is that they're not in violation of anything. They paid everything accordingly and et cetera. But with with that understanding, I just want to underscore the appreciation we have for the folks that do the detail work that we are affirming with our vote here.
Okay.
If you want a motion, I'll give that.
Please.
All right. I'll move that the select board vote to approve the annual renewal of all licenses as attached for calendar year 2021, license issuance contingent upon satisfactory inspections and submission of all required documents, fees and payments of municipal charges to be reviewed by town administrator.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Knox? Sorry. Hi, Mr. Knox? Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written. Thank you very much to Diane Dickerson for her hard work on that. Certainly appreciate her work. It's great. She keeps us keeps us on task.
We'll pass that on to her. She'll appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. So next we have updates. Town Administrator and Assistant.
Sure. So I'll take the first one. The our building commissioner, who is a trooper and is still on this meeting, has put a request in to fill the vacancy for the local building inspector. So Ed is on. If there's any questions of Ed at this time? Or if the board has any questions of Joe or I?
Right. I don't have any questions, just maybe a comment. But I'll wait to hear from other board members.
That's necessary.
And for me. Well, so.
So I I don't have any issue whatsoever with respect to the staffing request. I did want to maybe just talk to the board about the department. And this has to do with reorganization overall, which is another thing that we've discussed. We touched on it a little bit with respect to moving a couple of positions to contract employees. But also, I really wanted to just take a look at the building department overall and just see, you know, structurally or staffing wise, if there was anything that we wanted to do different or maybe revisit or have further discussion about that discussion about that department. And Paul, this might really reflect on the organizational aspect piece of town hall that we've been talking about a little bit here and there.
Yeah, I mean, probably, you know, late at night to be getting into this in detail. But we've, you know, talked about it in different iterations of the board with different department, well, with that particular department over the past couple of years. And I'd say, you know, what we would, what the board was dealing with, I was not party to it directly. But, you know, but I've certainly read the reports. You know, underscores it, a need for oversight, a need for some consolidation is there. I know the building commissioner head is certainly promoting that. There's there's a lot of moving parts there that need to kind of be gathered together and and looked at formally. And I'm fully supportive of that personally. And, you know, this is just one specific request. It's kind of independent of that. But it's, but you're, I appreciate you bringing up the, you know, the idea that we probably should be looking at that whole, the whole permitting building commissioner world that's in a lot of different little pieces that, you know, we very recently were reminded that maybe that's not the best thing not to have that as disparate as it is.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to mention it while we were reviewing this currently. But something that we'll definitely have to discuss in the future. And I just don't know how to move forward with that. But we can talk about that.
Would we perhaps want to create a subcommittee of the select board to, you know, look into it, to investigate the possibility of of switching the structural aspect of the building department?
I think I would, actually, I would defer to Mr. Glady and maybe Mr. Anzaldi in that regard.
No need to defer to me. I think that's a good idea. It's like, you know, if we're talking about structural changes, not a bad idea to have a, you know, a subcommittee of the board. We've done that regularly with different topics like that. So I think that's appropriate. Personally, I think that's appropriate.
All right. Well, maybe we can revisit that when Chuck's back.
Put that on for future staff, future meeting.
Yeah, let's do that. But in the meanwhile, we do, actually, I don't know if we want, I feel bad. The commissioner's been waiting on the call this whole time. If we want to just see if he has any comments or anything he wants to add, it seems pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you can hear me, nothing at this time to add other than the benefit of being a resident is I get to catch up on everything else while I watch the meeting.
Perfect. Wonderful. So we do have a motion.
Let me put my glasses on and read it then. I'll move that the select board support the hiring of a local inspector as requested by the building commissioner.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is yes. And the motion is approved as written. And we are on to the next item. Please, Mr. Anzaldi.
I'm going to defer it to Joe. Joe's worked on this.
Thanks, Anthony. And Paul had mentioned about this, how we are continuing to take steps to finalize the, actually, no, he didn't mention about this. Sorry. For 119 Tehadawan Road, we're finalizing the process with town council to do our due diligence so that we can come back in front of the the select board for the following meeting on the 21st. And, you know, we're setting a date for closing. We're finalizing some of the final inspections, awaiting reports. We had good news where the asbestos analysis on the site came back negative. So that that's all clean. So we're in the process just finalizing some of those reports so we can provide the board with a update and hopefully clean bill of health so that we can proceed with a formal vote to acquire 119 Tehadawan at our next meeting.
You have any update on the buried fuel tank?
Yes, that's some of the reports that are coming back. So it was very positive as far, not positive as far as they found stuff, but that it was good news that they did not find any residue. They did do testing, so they're awaiting the final results. We were hoping that some of this information would be available for tonight. That's why the agenda item says vote to acquire. But in talking to Tom following posting of the agenda as we were finalizing the packet, that's where we're slating this for just for an actual vote on the 21st so that we can make sure that the board has reports and documentation so that we can make sure that, not only for the board, but that also for the residents, that we've done our due diligence and that there's no concern or liability on the purchase of the site.
Thank you.
You're letting on that, and I don't want to preclude the the formal report, especially since I don't know what it says. But I know what we've talked about in Zoom calls is that, you know, our hired folks, experts, did locate a couple of other potential issues. But I don't think, you know, the underground tank was known. These other issues were not known at the time. But I don't think any of them have turned out to be anything significant. Is that fair, Joe, to say?
Correct. Correct. Right.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
All right. General updates, Madam Chair, I have a couple. I just want to congratulate Littleton Police Department on they received their letter that their intent is to be reaccredited. So Chief Pennard will be getting the official citation from from the accreditation agency. And at that point in time, certainly, we would be recommending an agenda item on this where the police department can get their proper recognition for the amount of time and effort that it goes into being a being reaccredited police department. And the second issue too, I just wanted to make mention. We saw a nice email that Nick received from DEP on the water department's handling of the PFAS situation. Nick was very, very proud of his team, as he should be. Tremendous leadership at the Littleton Electric Light and Water Department. They did a great job. They continue to do a great job. And it's it's nice to hear DEP saying that to to Nick and to the town. So I just wanted to pass those two things on to the board. Obviously, we we let you know that, but I thought it's worth mentioning for our residents.
That's excellent. Great work by both departments. Certainly very, very fortunate to have such strong leaders and, you know, just great, overall great departments, really caring about the community. And it's it's very nice to see them acknowledged at that level. Certainly, we commend their efforts and, you know, thank them for their hard work on behalf of the town. It's wonderful.
Yes, yes.
And Madam Chair, just to sort of piggyback off of that, just want to let not only the board, but then also anyone that may be watching that Littleton Electric Light and Water will be having a live public sewer sighting forum that is scheduled for Tuesday, December 15, 7:00 PM. And recommend visiting the ALWD website for more details for that forum.
Excellent. Thank you. And I just actually wanted to just take a comment, a moment to comment on the new format of the PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Anzaldi. I love it. It looks really great. I just wanted to make sure it was acknowledged. It looks wonderful. It's so much easier to follow with the meetings. Certainly appreciate you putting it together.
Need more. We need more animations, though. Things need to like swoop in and bounce and stuff.
That's our job, Matthew.
Can we do that?
Oh, yeah.
Can we do that? We should so do that.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm glad you pointed that out, Madam Chair. I hadn't really, you know, consciously picked up on it. But it is much easier to to navigate and look at.
It is. And I like it on the bottom, the like us on Facebook and follow us on Twitter.
Well, certainly, I didn't invent this.
I think just add in vote for us in May, right?
Yeah. You know, certainly, this is, you know, Keith started with the whole PowerPoint presentations. I just wanted to bring it up into the 21st century and get rid of the Western look that he had on the old PowerPoints. So 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 this hopefully is more aesthetically pleasing and helps the meeting flow.
Yeah, I love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to meeting minutes.
Yeah, Joe, there's nothing for the consent agenda, right? Yeah, okay. So we just have that regular session meeting minutes of November 23, 2020.
Was there any, did everyone have a chance to review those? Was there any other revisions, recommended?
You said we found no errors.
There's nothing that I think.
If there's no changes suggested, then I will move that the board vote to approve the regular session meeting minutes of November 23, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Glady?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Yes.
And Cindy Napoli is yes. The minutes are approved as written. And again, thank you very much to Sue Raymond. She does an amazing job on our minutes. We're very, very lucky that she is willing to undertake that task because it is certainly not easy. So thank you, Sue. And I believe that concludes our meeting for this evening.
Motion adjourned, Madam Chair?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes, and I also seconded every single motion tonight. I just want that on the record.
Okay, fully noted. You're signed up, Matthew. It's all yours. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. And that concludes our meeting for this evening. And we will be back on what date?
21st.
Okay, we will see you back here on the 21st. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.